Join me in the pledge and then please remain standing and Councilmember Tryon will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God. Dear God, we pray for guidance. Dear God, we pray for guidance in the matters before us this evening and we ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. We ask that you give us wisdom and discernment and guide our hearts as we make our decisions. Though our circumstances will at times seem as though they're unfair, we know that you are always unwavering protector and shield. Many of us are mentally and emotionally fatigued from the fires right now. As events in this meeting unfold, we seek your clarity and your peace. In Father's name, amen.
Dean, a roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Tryon?
Here.
And Mayor Crowder?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 1E is Proclamations to Acknowledge Measure C and V Citizen Oversight Committee Members. And I've got a stack of them here and I'm just going to read the first one, which is for Dan Hanson. And I want to acknowledge everybody else and I want everybody to come up and collect them, please. So whereas Dan Hanson was appointed to the Measure C Citizen Oversight Committee by the Town Council on February 24th, 2015, and whereas Dan Hanson served the community of Paradise as a member of the Measure C Citizen Oversight Committee from March 24th, 2015, until it expired on March 31st, 2021, and continued as a member of Measure V Citizen Oversight Committee until his resignation in July 2021. And whereas Dan Hanson has been a voice of reason and calm on the Measure C and Measure V committees, and whereas Dan Hanson's continued support was instrumental in the passage of Measure V on November 6th, 2018, which was an extension of Measure C, and whereas the Town Council of the Town of Paradise recognizes the valuable contribution to good government from appointed committee members who spend numerous hours in the service of the town with no compensation. Whereas Dan Hanson has generously donated his time and energy for the public good and performed his duties as a committee member with thoughtfulness and professionalism. Now therefore, I, Steve Crowder, Mayor of the Town of Paradise, do hereby recognize and express appreciation to Dan Hanson for his dedicated service to the Town of Paradise in witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of Paradise to be affixed heretofu this 10th day of August, 2021. I also have one here for Nikki Jones, George Morris Jr., Linda Dye, and Sharon Simonton. If you please come up and get these, I would appreciate it. Come on out of order. Thank you. And hang on because you all get to say a few words here.
I'm sure that that reasonableness is not in.
First, I'd like to thank the council for this. Woody actually appointed me to this. It's his fault. It was an honor to serve with Measure C. Seeing how it all went down, the measure was kind of close. It was approved by the voters. I thought we were brought, you know, in for the oversight and to do recommendations for the expenditures. All those police cars, all those Ford Explorers and the new engines, upgrades to body cams and all those things that that money was expended on was so needed. All the SCBA's for the fire department was incredible. It was a pretty diverse crowd. There was a little bit, you know, there was more fire and police backgrounds. One person that's staying on the Measure V that I hope you listen to in the future is Sharon Simonton. She has a passion for animal control and she has some great insight and some great suggestions and I hope that y'all pay attention to her. I know that it's all in your hands now anyway, but she has some great insights and thank you.
Thanks for your service, Dean.
Hi. Thank you guys for this. This is very wonderful. I want to thank the previous Town Council. When we initiated Measure C, we did all of what we needed to do and fought for it. They had no money. We were all stretched so thin. We were going back and forth with all the money issues and they, the Town Council supported Measure C to the letter, never wavered to what Measure C was about. So I feel that we did the citizens a good service. I want Measure V to do the same. I want it to be to the letter of what Measure V needs to be. And I trust that you will honor that for the next 10 years. The citizens deserve it. They voted for it and I appreciate any input from you guys and I hope that you appreciate input from us. But thank you again for your support and onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
I thought the last time I spoke before this council, about eight or nine years ago, would be the last time I spoke before this council. But thank you very much. I've enjoyed being on Measure C and now V. The people that are on it are very, very, we all take it very seriously. And we show up and we consider everything and we think about everything and we understand the ordinance. And we're pretty proud of all of the stuff that's happened since Measure C came in. And a lot of things that are happened, that happened in the town pre-fire that would not have happened without it. So it's an important thing that you all did, that this council did then, and that we're continuing on. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Members of the council, thank you for allowing me to, I guess, say a few words at this point and thank you for allowing me to be a member of Measure C and now Measure V. Measure C was something that the citizens of the Town of Paradise voted in and many people may not realize how much help Measure C was to the town pre-fire. Of course, life changed after November 8th. But all the things that we were able to get for the town that the town needed so desperately and they've all been mentioned already. And so now as we continue on with Measure V, which has been huge for the town, especially in post-fire construction, in fact that we're getting so many funds through Measure V due to the post-fire construction, that we continue to progress along that same line and continue to support the town in the infrastructure of the town and continue to get the things we need for our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 1F Campfire Recovery Updates. Calwyn, right with Cal OES. Hello, Cal.
Good evening all honorable mayor, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be back for this body as always. For the record, Collier with the Governor's Office of Emergency Services with a brief update on the Campfire State Hazard Truvable Program. So let me go ahead and see if I can get some slides up here for you. Alrighty, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Alright. So these slides should look somewhat similar to what we've run you through in the past. This is our overall kind of, the lines of effort on the screen. The first is felling operations, as we briefed out last time, that's substantially complete and has been for a little bit now. Wood management, when we last spoke, we projected to finish that by July 23rd. That is substantially complete and occurred right around that date. And really, the only remaining line of effort, and we'll speak through specifics of where we are, is the final inspections. We are on track to finish those by August 23rd, which is the date that we projected out at the last meeting. So holding all of our dates there and as we'll talk about in the graphs here, really in the final stretch, couple of schedule risks listed at the bottom, the first being Dixie and we can talk through a little bit about some of the impacts we are seeing there on a later slide. Okay, so these are probably the two more critical graphs. Same graphs we showed last time. On the left-hand side, you have completion by zone. So the council will recall, as we moved into the closure stage of this project, we broke the town up into zones that we could geographically track and manage progress within these units. Please report that 28 of those zones are fully complete and there are five we are still working on, although as the graph on the right alludes to, I think that five is somewhat overstated because it actually only accounts for seven total parcels that we're continuing to resolve out of the full universe there. So close to final completion here for sure. We did briefly re-mobilize a couple of felling crews to resolve a few items that were caught during the final inspection on these roughly 6,500 parcels and there is a few wood management resources still in town following up on those. And so that is accounted for within that seven. But overall, since we last spoke, essentially inspected about 49% of the parcels in town that were enrolled here, remediated where remediation was necessary and are moving those through. We'll talk about some kind of additional, just more administrative wrap-ups here, but from a field operations perspective, that's where we are. We showed you this slide as well last time as well. These are the property damage claims. It just, as a refresher, these are claims that come to our attention either because our team observes damage in the field, either during operations or during the final inspection and brings that to the attention of the property owner, where the property owner becomes aware of damage on their own. I cautioned at the last meeting that the numbers could go up a little bit as we did all these final inspections and they did. We've increased by six damage claims since we last spoke. You can see where each of those are in the status here. We have none in the awaiting review column. That's an important metric to me, that we don't have any, that we are just sitting on. 18, far and away the largest column, are in review and there's a number of steps that go in there. And, you know, different folks can kick them back at different stages if we don't think that the right course is being pursued there. So it is a thorough review process and I'm involved in each claim as well. So we have a number that are still going through there. Eight that we've closed with no action, that we've determined either it wasn't attributable to the state program or the damage wasn't founded, something of that nature. As a reminder, if folks disagree with that determination, they're entitled to do so and they can seek a pallet remedy through the Department General Services Government Claims Program, which is that little bit more formal review process at the state. And then there are five where we've approved corrective action and so our contractor will be making right on that work. So that is where we are on prior claims. As we talk about kind of, I know it's a focus of our team to make sure that we're keeping Brian and the town team as involved in this as we can so that should council have questions as we kind of move into the wrap-up stage here, we've got a way to contact. Alright, here is our resourcing slide for town. Felling crews presently zero. As mentioned, there was a brief split there where we brought back a couple to address some items we found, but those are gone again. Cleanup crews, we have three running, started with one hauling truck and those are just resolving punch list items, really on those, down to just the seven parcels now. State inspectors, we've ramped that up quite a bit. We have 12 in town, certainly as we complete the inspection phase here, those will be demobilizing off the incident. But we were successful at really looking at every nook and cranny of the CalOES and Cow Recycle agencies to pull folks out here on short-term deployments or longer-term deployments to help do these inspections. That was really a kind of a process, came together very quickly to make sure they were onboarded and trained and we were being consistent in our criteria, but that we were able to, you know, accomplish that line of effort as quickly as possible so we weren't administratively holding any of this up. That is where we are on the resourcing side. Just briefly, you know, we'd be remiss not to talk about Dixie and some of just the project impacts we're seeing. I'll be candid that they're primarily impacting our operations in the unincorporated areas where we have, you know, felling operations still in full swing. But even in town, we have had several days shut down due to unsafe air quality. That's a daily decision we monitor with our contractors. In some cases, we've had limited or adjusted operating periods due to red flag warnings. And certainly, you know, a really principal focus of ours and of our licensed timber operators who are, of course, regulated by Cal Fire, is that heightened focus on fire prevention. I think the worst possible outcome would be that our crews are the cause of another fire. So we reviewed that with all of our LTOs. I know they're doing crew-by-crew audits. We've sent some crews home that weren't able to pass field drills on fire prevention, fire tools, things of that nature. And although we don't really have or will not have crews in town much past those seven parcels, we know we will continue to have truvable operations in other parts of the county, both for this fire and for the other fire. And so, you know, that's the continued focus of CalOES and Cow Recycle is making sure that we're respectful of that item. Just to briefly talk about remaining tasks we do have to do in town. So the first there is resolving those outstanding damage claims that we talked about, the 18 that are still in the queue and any additional that should come into the queue. That's, you know, really something that my team is focused on on a daily basis now and we have folks that are dedicated just to doing the field review portion and then it comes up to the management team to look at. But that's something we're working on. On the top right there, transmitting those final sign-off reports to Butte County for property owner notification. So that's a process we have in place now, working very closely with actually George and his team at Butte County to get those over there, make sure they are, you know, properly recorded in the county's records and then that the property owner gets notified. So an administrative item to be sure, but an important one. Speaking of administrative items, the two on the bottom are in that same category, optimizing the documentation for contract closeout and eventual FEMA reimbursement. You know, certainly is the state's expectation that FEMA will pay their appropriate cost share on this project. They've been a wonderful partner throughout. Just a little briefly on that, FEMA did have an assigned project manager for most of this project, which when you consider they were managing the nationwide response to COVID and a variety of other events, I think didn't speak to their commitment. And we actually had a monitoring component, both from the United States Army Corps of Engineers and from one of FEMA's environmental contractors on the ground with us every day to help make sure that as we get to this stage of closing out and seeking reimbursement, there's some kind of independent federal entities that can speak on the state and ultimately the town and county's behalf. Looking forward to hopefully a smooth process there. And then similarly, we have some environmental reporting requirements to close out with our federal and state regulators related to cultural resources, endangered species, things of that nature. Our team is working hard to do that so we can get all those submitted in. And the final slide here, again, unrelated to the, well, this slide is unrelated to the town, but just to give you a little snapshot of where we are for tree felling in the unincorporated areas. If this is looking somewhat similar to the slide I showed you last time, that's truly due to, unfortunately, those air quality impacts we're seeing from Dixie has really constrained our ability to have heavy operations recently. But we are just under 20,000 trees down in Megilia. We have about 6,700 to go in Lower Butte, which is the Butte Creek Canyon areas and down kind of south of the town. Just over 7,300 trees down, only about 300 to go. Concow, one of our larger branches, 22,700 trees down, about 4,400 to go. Project-wide, we have about 11,538 trees to go and we're going to be just shy of 100,000 trees for our total scope. So that concludes the slides I had to share. As always, I'll be available for questions and it, just in light of kind of where we are and that by the next council meeting, we will almost certainly be concluded with those inspection operations in the town. It would be helpful to get the council's thoughts on whether they would like to continue these briefings, whether there are other items that CalOES could more regularly brief on or any direction the council has on that would be appreciated. So with that, I will pause for any questions.
Questions?
Cole. Woody?
Yes, sir.
So going back to that slide, about 18 properties that are still under review or supposedly damage is done either because a homeowner complained, filed a claim, or your internal audit crews notified you of damage. You made a couple of comments. One is that some of those claims are going to be satisfied by the subcontractor and, but my question on that piece is, what if they default on making that homeowner whole or correcting the thing? Was CalOES going to come in and back that up? That's one. And the other one is, as you move through this process of getting the FEMA reimbursement and closing this whole operation out, what about those pending investigations on claims? Won't they have to be finalized before you can close out things with FEMA? Because somebody's got to pay for the damage to these people's property. So you don't have to answer that in detail to me right now, but if you could make sure Brian has answers for those questions so that we can share that with our citizens?
I can speak to both those items now if you like, sir.
Great.
Sure. So yes, in the far right column there, corrective action closed, the question I believe was, does the state, you know, kind of manage that process and ensure that contractors follow through? The answer is yes. I have a team of professional contract managers who, you know, assisted making those determinations. And if we've decided a contractor, ultimately, we're talking about here is a contractor being out of scope and needing to correct out-of-scope work essentially, which can, you know, include other damage. The answer is yes. We follow through with that. We ensure they follow through on their contractual obligations and we have a variety of remedy clauses in our contracts to, you know, make them, make them comply with that. And so certainly that's a process where if our operations team is getting the sense that a contractor is not moving forward with that, we loop in our contract managers and see how we can ensure that they comply with the terms. The second question, yes, sir?
Well, the other thing was a timeline. I mean, you know, we're dealing with insurance companies, we're dealing with the Fire Victims Trust, we're dealing with, even your program has taken two years to get started, over a year to reach completion. I mean, people, you know, want to have their roofs repaired, their fences repaired, their driveways repaired, you know, they want, you know, what kind of timeline is associated with this? A government deal, is it going to be months, years, or weeks?
Sure. So I've had this question a number of times talking about that one because I hesitate to give any real timeline on it, but it is definitely toward the weeks and months point here. I mean, this is a claims process that stands up only to support the incident management team. It's not a long-term permanent program that's designed to resolve those claims within the period we're deployed here. So, you know, any claim that's, years is fully out of the question. There are some claims that are, have been under review for months at this point. It really does vary based on the type of damage that's being alleged, the complexity of the investigation, the evidence that needs to be reviewed, all of those factors that I'm sure you're aware of. But I think, you know, really as we get to this kind of tail end piece, what I would be recommending you advise your constituents is if they, if they are independently negotiating with our contractor, which sometimes happens as they get down to brass tacks, if those aren't moving along, they should have a state point of contact as well to loop that person in. If they don't know who that is, sir, why don't we just have a conversation about it and we can, we can loop in somebody at the state to make sure those are moving along? Because I certainly don't want to be in a position where this program is wrapped up for weeks or months and, you know, we're still talking through these items. I will say though, on your second question about federal reimbursement, you're not wrong that we certainly endeavor to have all claims between ourselves and our contractors resolved before we go for reimbursement and we will. The federal reimbursement process, as some of the room who've maybe worked through that know, it is not a, not a light speed one. So we're not looking at submitting everything to FEMA in the next weeks or months or it could be quite a while for all this to get reconciled and for us to really settle with FEMA. So that's not necessarily a concern of mine, sir, that, you know, we would still be working through these. It's just in my experience, that process takes longer than pretty much anything else in the project.
Thank you.
Absolutely, sir.
If people still have some trees that they would like to be checked, what's the best process for them to do that?
I apologize, the audio is a little broken there. Would you mind repeating the question, ma'am?
So if residents still have some trees that they want to have checked or they feel that were missed, what process is best for them to go through to get those checked?
So at this point, our assessment operations and our felling operations are complete. That phase of the project is wrapped up. I'd recommend they, they work with the tree advocates and figure out what the next kind of options are there in terms of compliance, but we are, you know, absent that small handful of properties, our scope of work will be completed in the town here very quickly. So I'm not sure if that answered your question or not.
No, thank you.
I thought that, I thought the thing was if trees died after the thing, you said there was going to be the opportunity to come back and reassess trees. Has there been some trees that have died since your initial assessment was done that are in the, meet the criteria for the program?
Sure. So just to kind of briefly review that process worked. As we went through assessment and then into felling, it certainly was a long period there and we were consistently deploying arborists, refer to them as roving or floating arborists that were going in front of felling crews and in some cases behind felling crews if it was brought to our attention to add additional trees that could fit the eligibility scope. And then if those were identified and found to be eligible at the timeframe when we were in project operations, those were felled and removed. We're past both those windows at this point. So, you know, we're, it's our determination that everything that could have met the eligibility has been reviewed and is included. I know the town might be able to speak a little bit to some of the hazard mitigation funding they're looking at for future work, additional projects that federal government may choose to participate in. But, you know, as I've counseled some folks here, this program as it was scoped and as, you know, FEMA's agreed to pay for, is in some ways, you know, a one-time solution to a long-term problem, right? I think it's important to recognize that forest tree is an ongoing endeavor and trees will continue to recover and continue to die and that's certainly something that, you know, if our team can provide any counsel to the town or the residents on kind of what we've observed in the tree conditions over the duration of our project, we'd be happy to. But unfortunately, just the way this project is set up, it's not a, you know, enduring long-range program. It's a, was and is a, you know, a one-time endeavor to get the work that's eligible. That's the way FEMA Public Assistance works and we've essentially done that at this point. Does that answer your questions, sir?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Cole? Cole, as far as your question of future reports, I think we should get with our staff and see what they think and we can get back to you on that if that's okay. And I want to say, I know this operation hadn't always gone, you know, without a hiccup, but the Town of Paradise will always be grateful for FEMA and CalOES for the help they've given us to this because we could not have done it without you. And, you know, when you're, when you're driving by Town Hall, you're always welcome to come in for a cup of coffee. Far as seeing you again professionally, we kind of hope we never have to do that. So, but, but really thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, sir. It was an honor and a privilege.
Okay, well, let's move on. We have the following written updates. Let Curtis, our Recovery and Economic Development Director, Recovery, Project Advocacy, Economic Recovery and Development Communications and Emergency Operations. Are there any cards or questions?
I have no cards on this item.
Mark Maddox, our Public Works Director, Town Engineer on Infrastructure and Sewer Update. Any cards or questions?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay. Tony Lindsay, our CDD Building and Code Enforcement, Code Enforcement Update. Any questions or cards on that?
I have a question. Tony?
He is.
Thank you for the written report. I got a lot of information out of it, but there was one piece that I didn't find in there and I wondered if you had statistics on. Do you know how many RVs are in town that do not have temporary use permits?
That ebbs and flows throughout the reporting period because we find some and we close some. So that's, it goes out, here's a, oh yeah.
Can you give me a ballpark? I mean, is it 30 or 150?
Right now, currently as our stat, so I've got 60 that don't have temporary use permits. I think we have 24 that have violations, that have temporary use permit with violation.
Okay, so 60 that don't have Okay, so 60 that don't have use permits at all?
Correct.
And 24 that do have use permits but have violation?
Correct.
Okay.
So I've got 84 RV violations.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tony? Thank you, Tony.
Great, thank you.
Kate Anderson, our Business and Housing Manager with the Housing Update. Any questions or cards?
I have no cards on this item.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we have technical difficulties on the Financial Advisor update, so we're going to recommendation, recommend that we bump that till next council meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, then on to item two, our Consent Calendar. Any discussion? Any motions? Any cards?
I have no cards on the consent.
I move acceptance.
Second.
Motion by Bowden, Bowlen, second is Colleton. Roll call vote, Councilmember Bowlen.
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Okay, so item four, Public Communication. And these are for matters that are not on the council business agenda. Any cards, Dina?
I do have one card on this item. Kathy Claudia Gallantine.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me come and talk tonight. My name's Kathy Gallantine. My husband and I moved back to Paradise, rebuilt our house, and we moved here in May. And I was told by many in the community that my coming tonight was kind of like a waste of time. But I've had some things that have come up that are very dear to me and to, will be to the community. I'm here to go on record and to bring some attention related to our creeks, whether they be running seasonal or watershed areas, which secure water flow and drainage in our town. I know we're in the midst of rebuilding and since I have moved back up here, I've had personal instances of seeing clearing and grading that has basically covered some seasonal creeks with three feet of dirt. And trees have been fallen and have gone into these creeks. And property owners have built ponds and put up fences. And these are people who are coming in from the outside also that aren't aware that, that we, when we, when it does rain, we do have water here. So, so it's something that's not going on now and there's so many issues for our community that are important right now. But if we don't start looking at what's going on with all of this, we're going to have a terrible problem from rainy weather. It's going to affect people's properties where people have built. In my area, I see things that have gone on that is going to unpack new houses that are being built for people. So my question is basically, I've been guided by the city to recognize that once a violation happens, it's a wildlife, fish and wildlife issue, and I should go to them. But I would like to talk to you folks about the council and the commission about being proactive in some way to inform our public, whether it be people who are building their homes, whether there are contractors coming in, or hired people coming in from the community to clear our fire issues, you know, our, our properties. And some way to give people information as to written guidelines as to what they can and cannot do to these environments. Because it is not only affecting the possible of drainage in our area, but it's going to affect our properties and it is affecting what's happened recently on our area. It's affecting some wildlife areas where we have wildlife who's reestablished themselves and now these things are happening and it's going to be a problem again. And this is going to take years. And here we are again, rebuilding for years, something precious. So thank you very much for listening. I will continue to be an advocate in this, so you'll probably see me again and hopefully there won't be a problem that we have.
Thank you. Okay, before we proceed with item 6A, I want to say that this is a real emotional topic and we want to hear what everybody has to say and we want to listen to everybody, but we need to do it with civility and respect. And if you don't feel you can do that, please don't speak as we really don't want to have to ask anybody to leave. From the council, I'm going to ask that when we have our discussions, that the same thing apply, please let the other person finish. Once they're finished, you can have your say, but again, with the civility and the respect. And I appreciate it. So with that, let's go to item 6A and Susan is going to present this.
Now I'm on, okay. You Mayor Crowder, good evening, council. So as mentioned, this staff agenda item is in regards to the interim housing urgency ordinance. Tonight's staff is just looking to enter into a discussion with the council ahead of some upcoming deadlines starting in September, so that if the council desires to make any changes to the ordinance, we'll have the September council meeting to do so. So just a quick snapshot of where we are right now. We have 288 temporary use permits that have been issued for occupancy that are valid until the end of next month with no rebuild permit issued. Overall, since the start of the urgency ordinance, we've issued over 600 temp use permits, but about 340 of those have transitioned over to the zoning ordinance because they got a rebuild permit issued. That's great, but what we have left is 288 of those. 242, or about 84%, are owner occupied. That's how they were applied for. The other 46 are just a mix of renters, friends, family, people who were displaced and given permission by the landowner to reside on that property. 18 of those temporary use permit holders have already provided us evidence that they meet one of the four alternative thresholds. And so their permits have already been extended till December 31st. Though accounting for that, we still have 270 sites issued permits that need to show evidence of rebuilding progress to stay beyond the next month. And then just as a side note, in November of 2020, and again in June of this year, we sent out notices, all the temp use permit holders, to let them know of any of the updates to the ordinance, as well as what they needed to do to stay compliant. And then this is just a visual snapshot. Of those 288, 242 are owner occupied, 46 are renters, friends, or family. So tonight's topics for council discussion and direction, first is about the ordinance deadline. Second are about those alternative thresholds for a rebuild permit. Third, about health and safety compliance. And then lastly, an urgency ordinance versus a zoning. So first is about the ordinance deadline. Currently, there's still two deadlines ahead of us for this calendar year. The first is September 30th. That is for residents living in RVs without a rebuild permit to provide evidence of meeting one of four alternative thresholds to live in the RV until the end of this calendar year. The other deadline is December 30th, 2021, or 31st, excuse me. And that's when the urgency ordinance in its entirety is slated to expire. That includes living in an RV without a rebuild permit, storing RV, and building a garage before a house. So some deadline options for discussion and just as a note, staff will be outlining each of these discussion items and then at the end have them all listed to actually discuss. So some deadline options for discussion. One is to leave the ordinance as is, keep the September 30th deadline and the December 31st. But that also means that we potentially move forward with up to 270 abatement. As a side note, the abatement we finished was just shy of $19,000, it was $18,900 and change. And from the point that we do our first hearing, took us about six weeks. It had debated with the back and forth, with the hearings and the court and the actual Yet another option would be to remove the September 30th deadline, have everything expire at the end. And then another option is to extend it for up to two more years, giving enough time for PG&E claims to be paid and residents to determine if they have the resources. Alternative threshold. Currently, there's four that people can show evidence of in lieu of a rebuild permit issued. One is to show an application for residential rebuild permit that has been submitted for plan check. Another is a signed contract with the building contractor. A third is a contract with a manufactured home dealer. And the last is working with town or state staff on a housing. So some alternative threshold options for discussion. Leave it as is, keep the existing four alternative thresholds. Another would be the potential to add proof of PG&E claim as an, as a fifth alternative threshold which would allow applicants to stay beyond the September 30th deadline. This supports two different scenarios. One is for residents who may not have any intention of rebuilding, but this claim money will help them find permanent housing. And then the other, for the four existing alternative thresholds, three of those require some outlay of funds. And if they don't have those and they're not comfortable taking on an additional debt with a housing loan through our program, then this claim may give, the PG&E claim may give them the option to be able to pay for everything out of pocket. And then another option for discussion would be just waive all the thresholds. And as long as you are complying with all the health and safety standards for the duration of the urgency ordinance. Health and safety compliance. An option for discussion on health and safety. If we leave it as is, all temp use permit holders are already required to be connected to septic, electrical, water, have garbage service, meet defensible space, and general property maintenance. If corrected, though, applicants can violate these provisions multiple times throughout the duration that that temp. So some options may be to add language that two violations in one calendar year would be cause for revocation of the temp use permit. Another would be if we have to issue two citations on a single violation, that as well could be cause for revocation. That at all times, the applicants are supposed to be maintaining these health and safety standards. And so if staff continues to have to control the applicant, though, then that could be an option for revoking the permit and moving to. So with the temp use permits already issued, there are 23 sites that are currently in some, violating some provision of the urgency ordinance, which is about 8% of what we have issued. The top three violations are not being connected to septic, not being connected to power, and too many RVs. That's followed by not having a water connection, abandoned vehicles, no trash service, unmaintained defensible space. Of those 23 sites, 12 of them, 12 of them are just at a point of a notice of violation, but the other 11 have already received at least one citation. And then the last item for discussion would be urgency ordinance versus zoning ordinance. So with the urgency ordinance, changes are amending that night once adopted, but it does require a four-fifth vote. It temporarily allows activities typically in violation of the zoning order. And the abatements are more streamlined because the noncompliance is already deemed a public nuisance in the language of the ordinance. With the zoning ordinance, to move it from urgency to zoning would be a four-month process, as would any future change. It has to go to hearing with the commission, two times to the council, and then 30 more days to be effective. However, it only requires a majority vote. Any ordinances moved into the zoning ordinance, though, do need to be compliant with the town's general plan. Consideration for the council, staff recommendation is to keep it as an urgency ordinance. However, if a majority of the council would like to move the temporary use permits to the zoning ordinance, please consider allowing the garages being built before the houses to expire urgently. So the next step is council direction to staff on these four topics: the ordinance deadline, the alternative thresholds, the health and safety compliance, and urgency versus zoning. And then this is a snapshot of those four items and each of those three options that were presented in the staff report. And I'm going to leave this here and be available to answer any questions or clarify any information for the council.
I have a question. Susan, can you explain why you want the garages before homes to expire? What is bad about that? I don't understand.
So originally, it was council asked staff to bring it forward so that people in RVs would have additional household items that couldn't be stored in the RV. Only six of the 30 permits we've issued have been tied to actual RV. Said, what we're finding is that these storage buildings are a way to get electricity to the site where you normally do, and then the potential to bring in RV, which add as a code enforcement.
But we're not issuing any more temporary use permits?
You are correct.
So additional RVs are not allowed?
You are correct.
And will eventually be forced to leave?
Yes, they just add to our code enforcement. You are right.
You're not seeing people who say want to build a garage, live in the garage while they build the house. You're not seeing that.
We have, some of our open code enforcement cases are people living in accessory structures that are not built as houses, but not all of them, no. If that's what you're asking. If they're building a shed and then, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
I can just see the scenario of somebody wanting to build their garage first?
Yes.
And live in the garage, say they put a bathroom in the garage and they, they live in the garage while they build the house. And to me, I'm not opposed to that.
So that's a building code issue.
Right.
Can you build it first as a house and our three occupancy and live in it? Yes. And then if you want to build a larger main house, all residential property has the potential to have like an in-law unit, if it's large enough and septic can accommodate. And either you could convert that, you know, garage structure to an ADU, or you can convert it back to a garage when you're done building your big house later. But whatever you're living in needs to be built to a building occupancy for living.
So that's possible to do already outside of the urgency ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted to build your small one first, yep, absolutely. It just has to still meet that 750.
Thank you.
But that's an ADU, not a garage. Am I an ADU, not a garage?
You are correct. You are correct. But if you even wanted to build an ADU with an attached garage to it?
Correct.
Absolutely. And either keep the ADU later if, if septic can accommodate it, right? Or convert that whole space back to garage later.
Pre-fire, you couldn't build a garage first?
You are correct.
Oh.
So you can't do that?
No.
Not as a garage, but you could build like a, a small?
Right.
House with like an attached garage and then have the potential to build a bigger one later.
But that's not what I, that's not what I'm thinking of.
But no, you can't live in a garage first.
You can't.
Yeah, no, live in a garage.
And that's just a building code.
Okay.
Could be a Tony question.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any, any other questions for Susan before we open it up to public comment? Any, any other questions for Susan before we open it up to public comment? Dina Karts.
Okay. So first of all, I have two emails that we've received from citizens that I'd like to read. The first one is from Michael Perry. Like so many other paradesons, I lost my home and everything ended to the campfire. For several months, I was displaced, sleeping in motel rooms or other locations while waiting for clearance to return to Paradise. Eventually, I was able to obtain a small RV trailer and then locate to the property where my home no longer exists. The house was purchased new by my mother, where she lived for the last 20 years or so of her life. My older brother is the current owner of the property. I am his tenant and property manager. In early 2013, I moved to Paradise to reside in the house we consider to be the family home, since this was the last home where our mother lived. Within a short time, I came to love the town and the people who lived here. Like my mother, I too looked forward to making Paradise the last place I lived. When the campfire took my home, I struggled for months to find alternative housing. However, I decided that I wanted to return and in my small way help the town of Paradise rise from the ashes. I have been grateful that the Paradise Town Council have allowed survivors to reside in RVs on our properties while we wait to know if and when we might rebuild. Over the past several months, I have been happy to see the progress of our businesses returning and several new homes rise throughout the town. However, as is the case with many survivors, I am currently not in a financial state to begin the process of rebuilding. Although my brother is not able to rebuild, he is okay if I put a new house on the property, assuming I can afford to do so. Unfortunately, at this time, I do not have the financial ability to begin the process. Like most paradesons who lost their homes, I too am waiting on funds from the PG&E settlement by our victims' trust. As I'm sure the council is aware, this is a long, ongoing process that is likely to take several more months to complete. Regretfully, the attorneys representing the victims have no way of knowing or predicting if or when we will receive full compensation for our losses from the VFT. While it is my desire to continue to live here until I receive settlement from the FVT, I do not know if I will be able to rebuild. At present, I sleep in a 2019 trailer. I paid for the permits to use the property and to install power from PG&E. I am paying PID for water and NRWS for trash, yard, waste pickup. I have a working septic as well. I am maintaining the property as I've done since I moved here. I keep the property neat and clean by clearing weeds, removing pine needles, leaves, and other tree debris, cleaning up anything necessary to maintain the property. I have filled most of the pit where the house stood from the dirt from the PG&E underground cabling project and await additional dirt to complete the remaining area in preparation to eventually rebuild. Through my brother, I cover the current property tax for the parcel where my home used to be. I patronize businesses in Paradise, helping to support the financial regrowth of our town. Until I receive full compensation from the VFT, I cannot begin the process to rebuild. As at present, I am unable to afford these expenses, but I do not know if I will have sufficient resources to pay for the final total costs. My hope is that I will, however, per the fire victim's attorney, it is expected that I will be at least sometime next year before all victims' claim will be final, if not longer. That said, I respectfully request that the town of Paradise allow those of us who survived the campfire and wish to rebuild our homes and an extension to RV living on our properties, at least through next year, when hopefully we should know what we will be able to do going forward, as long as we maintain our properties as if we were in houses paying for utilities. Thank you. Okay. The next one, and I was reading fast. The next one is from Angela Kastler. I hope that staff and the council will extend the urgency ordinance relating to interim housing for another two years as people need more time. Here are a few reasons why people need more time. The Dixie Fire will continue to stress housing availability in the entire region. The three-year mark of insurance-covered rental assistance for many survivors is ending this November. This brings a fresh wave of new people needing housing who have been housed by their insurance. People are in a long waiting line for drawings, engineering, and applying for the BRCE recovery assistance grants. The town has not created a place for many of its residents to be housed, and that is a great way for some of the money to be used. I wish we could take care of our own. I wish we could create a temporary housing area so people can be somewhat safe and secure. The city of Chico is under strain with housing the homeless. Let's not let any of our residents become homeless again. Once was enough. Property values are not going to increase. It'll take time for home values to stabilize. We are all now housing, our, we are all now housing appraisal values are sky-high due to limited demand and the housing crisis. Judge Trotter's third video said that they do not think the Fire Victims Trust will get through all of the claims until sometime next year and definitely not by the end of 2021. I need a shed on my property to store, secure, and make slightly all, make slightly all of my worldly possessions that I do not want stolen. This makes it much easier for police when we can avoid theft of personal belongings and creates a nice, tight, tidy property. I have always had an RV prior to the fire. I liked RV prior, I liked RVing prior to the fire. Maybe I'll like RVing after these terrible days, who knows? But in the meantime, my land is a great place for me to park an RV. I hope that we can create a culture in the town that supports recovery by asking everyone to just be patient while everyone has a chance to get their lives back in order. This is an extraordinary traumatic experience, and it is going to take time for people to get their lives back in order. Just asking for patience from everyone will be a great way for all of us to work together toward recovery. Thank you, Angela. All right. The first card I have is from Bruce Herman.
And just a reminder, if I didn't say so before, each speaker will get three minutes. So thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Herman, and it's a pleasure for me to be here today to address you. I was a high school senior when it became the town of Paradise, and I remember well the discussion on why we would become a town. And I wish to applaud the direction of the town and the council in the recovery, and I support completely safe and sustainable housing. Currently, I'm the director of the Campfire Collaborative. And the Campfire Collaborative is an organization that has over 100 members. Well, 100, not 100 members, but 100 partners, and about 40 of those are members, and about 16 of those are funders. And you'll hear tonight from some of our disaster case managers working in five different organizations who are working with survivors and have helped find permanent solutions for well over 1,000 people to date. And I've not met a group that works harder on helping the recovery than those that I'm associated with through the Campfire Collaborative. And we need those people to find permanent housing. And we are working hard through this collaboration to find permanent housing. We just need more time. And so that's all that we're asking for is more time. And so the Campfire Collaborative would support a two-year extension for the emergency ordinance and understanding and supporting the idea that yes, someday, it should sunset. Thank you.
The next card is from Kate Skousmith.
Good evening, council. My name is Kate Skousmith. I am the Disaster Case Management Systems facilitator for the Campfire Collaborative. I'm also a campfire survivor and have been a Ridge resident for almost 20 years and have worked, has worked as a social worker on the Ridge for a little over five years. The mission of disaster case management under the Campfire Collaborative is to provide comprehensive recovery services to individuals and families impacted by the campfire, offering services that are delivered with respect and dignity with the goal of providing support while empowering those impacted by the campfire so they may recover and regain community, family, and self to the fullest potential possible. Our collaborative mission in disaster case management is to promote the dignity and worth of survivors we serve and to work to resist factors that may re-traumatize and cause additional harm to the recovery of our clients. Our DCM system is composed of five community-based organizations serving both pre-disaster homeowners and renters. We have a total of 34 disaster case managers working within those agencies. From our July 2021 monthly DCM report, we have 552 cases open, of which 109 of those cases are households that will be impacted by the end of the urgency ordinance. Collectively, we know there are more households who need assistance, and daily we receive more referrals from our community partners working in the recovery process. Since the campfire, disaster case management has had to navigate additional wildfires, power outages and shut-offs, and create a system that could still serve survivors during a global pandemic. We have learned through it all that the enduring factor that has seen us through as a system are the strong relationships disaster case managers have built with the survivors receiving our services. Relationships heal, and we know this is critical to seeing our community thrive once again. The upcoming end of the urgency ordinance is detrimental to the stability of our clients and the long-term efforts of our case managers that are working constantly to navigate persistently changing situations and circumstances in the recovery process. Another displacement creates insurmountable setbacks to recovery that are re-traumatizing and cause even more barriers to an already complex path towards recovery. Displacement will also force our disaster case managers to have to pivot from long-term recovery work with these 109 households back to immediate relief work as they will have to assist families in identifying another temporary housing situation. This will only complicate and extend the work of achieving long-term housing solutions as these case managers will have to put all their attention towards mitigating another crisis. Not to mention, the switch to relief work will be extremely taxing to our system as we have to navigate another barrier. As a collaborative, we wish to support the objectives of the urgency ordinance in sustaining safe, sanitary, and sustainable housing for the town of Paradise, but we urge you to reconsider the end of the ordinance. These are the end date of the ordinance. These are incredibly difficult times for both survivors and the systems created to assist them, not to mention the community at large. We are in another season of devastating fires that have initiated more evacuations and long-term displacement of survivors and surrounding communities, leaving few options for short-term or temporary housing solutions for anyone to even relocate to. I thank you for your consideration for extending the urgency ordinance, as I do believe it is in the best interest of not only campfire survivors, but also the many community partners that are working tirelessly to assist in our recovery. Thank you.
Very nice.
The next card is from Erin Kennedy.
Good evening, council members. My name is Erin Kennedy, and I'm the director of case management at the Boys and Girls Club. On the day of the fire, we had 500 families impacted by the fire and five club sites that were impacted by the fire. I'm here to represent the disaster case management teams that are working so hard in this recovery effort. My small team of four have effectively closed hundreds of cases and rehoused dozens and dozens of families. I'd like to share with you some of the barriers that our, our clients are facing and the reason why they haven't rebuilt, pulled permits and such. COVID has created incredible delays in production. It slowed availability of products and increased the cost of materials. PG&E settlements, many, many, many of our clients are still waiting, and they'll, they are losing hope that they will ever hear from PG&E again. There are zero options for renters who post-fire thought, I want to return to my hometown. I'm going to purchase land and I'm going to build. There are no options for loans or grants or programs for them to build because they were pre-fire renters. Contractors are booked. Up to date, contractors are booked out. We are having clients tell us we aren't booking anybody else for this year and even next. Navigating resources and rebuild options and being put into holding patterns between environmental health, Recover California, the OOR program, or permit departments is creating more havoc. Limited income and underinsured are all wanting, are all waiting on the Recover California and PG&E settlements. Code enforcement clients are putting clients into even greater debt that they will have a hard time getting out of, let alone having funds left to rebuild their home. Health issues created from the trauma of the fire are making recovery efforts even more compounded by the sensitivity of the ordinance. The waitlist for a case manager was 5,000 people long. At the very beginning of this, there were 30 of us doing this work, and we've slowly but surely over two and a half years helped all of those people. The ordinance will also deplete financial resources that disaster case managers could be utilizing for infrastructure or insurance and loan gap funding. Old trailers do not have anywhere to go according to rules around parks and the minimum age requirement on those trailers. Many trailers were gifted to survivors after the fire and are very old. Having to find new spaces for trailers and RVs is going to be nearly impossible in the midst of another disaster, which is bringing hundreds of people into our communities, therefore taking valuable time away from the recovery work that the case managers do. Please consider the people that this ordinance is affecting. The elderly, the disabled, the sick, those with children, the most vulnerable in your community. Please think about how this displacement will only make this recovery even more difficult than it already is. Thank you for your time.
The next card is for David Breed.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is David Breed. I'm a lifelong resident of Paradise. At 53, I'm husband to my wife Jennifer and father to our 13-year-old son Benjamin. Before the fire, I worked as a painter full-time for Bill Hughes Painting, and my wife worked full-time for Grocery Outlet on Clark Road. I also played drums with Big Mo and the Full Moon Band, among many other local bands. Like so many other, like so many others, our lives changed that day on September 8th. Including my insured and mortgage-free home, my family lost 14 homes in the fire. I am the only one in my family that chose to stay and rebuild. After we realized how bad the devastation from the fire was, I asked my wife and son what we should do. Should we stay or should we move on like the rest of our family? We all decided unanimously that we would stay and help rebuild the town. And I knew that I wasn't going to be able to get by on painters' wages, so I joined the local labor union 185, and I got hired on with the DROC. And I, for all of 2019, I participated in the debris removal program. After that program ended, I was still able to continue working through my company and the labor union. And until the pandemic hit, then I was forced onto unemployment. Sorry, I got my notes here. The whole process of, of doing the debris removal was really cathartic. It meant more than a paycheck to me to be a part of the town's rebuild effort. The task force that I worked with, Task Force 109, cleared over 158 burned-out lots during 2019. And after I got forced onto unemployment from the pandemic, I didn't give up. I managed, after many months of searching, I found work through the labor union in Oregon. So I worked for five months up in Oregon, all the time trying to get back to the town to, to come back to do part of the rebuild effort. In March of this year, I was successful in getting employment back in Paradise after five long months in Oregon with the labor union. And I started working for the Hazard Tree Removal Program. Now, as we all know, that program's come to an end, or it's very in the final stages. But the company that I work with has secured 30% of the underground PG&E contract. So I'm slated to be working in this town as a journeyman labor union worker for many years to come. Besides being busy working six and seven days a week, 72 and 84-hour weeks, 12 to 14 hours a day, I've also made time to follow through with everything that the town of Paradise has required of my family. We've, we've got, we got a survey, we obtained the PID backflow, we installed a temporary powerful, we secured garbage service.
Sorry, we're, we're past our three minutes.
Okay. I guess in closing, I stand here before you to ask, to a considered please, extending this ordinance for another two years to give families like ours a chance to rebuild. We have every intention. I have no desire, one last thing, and I'll give up the time. I have no desire to live in a shanty town. We have a robust code enforcement apparatus in place to remove bad actors, and I fully support if there's drugs or alcohol or, you know, criminal activity, let's use that code enforcement to get those bad actors out. But please consider giving families like mine another chance.
Thank you.
The next card is from Tammy Spurlock.
I am not living in a trailer, but I'm advocating for the people who are tonight. I'm a local real estate broker. I'm also an admin on the Wildfire Settlement Discussion Facebook page, where we are tracking settlement offers from the trust, and we are posting those things. So, you know, the trust has made a lot of alteration, well, first and foremost, a lot of promises to us that they would have payments to us by a certain time. They have deviated with that and now extended that probably till the end of next year. I look at determination notices on a daily basis. I look at determination notices on a daily basis with survivors. I post them anonymously. I'm finding errors and helping them get more money, but I'm seeing a trend. And one of the trends is, is that the trust has valued our properties at 40, 30% to 40% under pre-market or pre-fire value, because I'm also doing the broker price opinions and one of the experts for my set of attorneys. And so what happens there is that that calculation goes into a formula that creates, first and foremost, a rebuild estimate, a cost, and then it also calculates into their content coverage. So for people that are underinsured and not insured, that's a pretty substantial cut in home value that equates to about $150,000 to $180,000 less in offer. And so what this is going to do is it's going to cause many, many appeals that is going to drag out the timeline. And so when people get, first of all, out of 70,000 people, 3,500 have got offers. That's like winning the lottery right now. People are not getting the offers. And so, and there's no rhyme or reason how they're dictating who gets the offers. We have no way of knowing. There's people on priority lists that have cancer that are dying. One got an offer the other day, and he died two hours before he saw his offer. So, you know, it's, the Town of Paradise received $220 million a year ago, and I live in this town. And my expectation for all of you who have received money would be, "I want my town back tomorrow." It's been a year, but I don't really see anything that's happened. There's nothing in town that's made my life any happier since I've been here. I know these things take time, right? It takes time to go through councils, to have plans, to have bids, to have all these things, right? So we have been almost three years allowing the town to have the time to rebuild the town. And so I think that on the flip side, you need to give these people time in order to get their settlements. First and foremost, they're only going to get 30% to start. Then they're going to get a second stomach. I really feel, by looking at the numbers, they will be lucky to get 50% to 60% of their offer by the time we're done. But when I look at the uninsured people, they are getting $700,000 and $800,000 offers, some of them. So if you take half of that, they will be able to rebuild their homes, but it's going to come in increments. Does anybody have any questions for me? I think she did. Oh, she didn't. Oh, sorry. So anyways, I urge you to give them an opportunity to go through at least getting their last draw from the trust, and that would be probably two years. But they really do need that time, and I think that we owe them that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next card is from Erin Omenny.
Hey, what's going on, you guys? All right, 10 years I've been a member of this community. 10 years I've been putting up flags out on the Skyway, you know? There's a 90% chance I've been under every single one of your houses in here. It's not right. We're residents here, too. Just because we weren't adulting as well as you were, or as rich as you are, doesn't give you the right to tell us we have to leave home. This is our home, too. We were going to let the government tax us out, we're not going to get burned out, and we're definitely not going to let you ordinance your way out.
The next card is from Jewel Charney.
I've been a property owner in this town over 40 years. I'm on the newly, thank you, Kevin, for smiling at me. I'm on the newly formed Public Relations Committee, of which Kevin is a member. I would like you to refer to your agenda packet 6A item, because I'm going to go through my comments in order of that packet item. With regard to the background portion on page 146, I commend Suzanne for your work, but I think you left out one key point, is that some of us, and myself are included, have been denied a permit, even though I've met all the requirements. I didn't get power back on my property until a year and a half after the Ding Company that gave me the power back burned, caused it to be gone in the first place, along with the rest of my house. So I've tried multiple times to get a temporary use permit for my RV, which is a motor home which comes and goes. And I've always been told, "We're not doing any permits at this time." And that goes back to June of 2020, when I got the power finally back on my property. And I've met all the other requirements. So I think that's an important thing for the council to be considering, is you're not reaching everybody in an RV if you're only sending out mail to people that have these use permits. Thank you. Point number two, or three, excuse me, that's going to be three for me. I would suggest to reach anyone and everyone that needs to be reached that's in an RV, whether they have a permit or not, that you use the Public Relations Committee to brainstorm compliance methodology. We can help. That's kind of what I think we're there for. Number four, as far as the hurdles that Suzanne listed, I thank you for that. I'm glad that the town is acknowledging these. It's not just time and money, though, as someone earlier said. Materials availability is a huge issue. I just had a hell of a time just getting my fence that was, the part, half of my fence that was down in the fire put back. And another huge issue is finding quality and available contractors. There almost is no such thing. I fully support, this is on page 148, item number C, extending the ordinance for two I agree with what other people have said that if there's bad actors... One, one more second, two more seconds. Do you have ways to get rid of bad actors? Take advantage of that. Don't paint all our veers with a broad brush. We didn't, we hate, most everybody I know hates living in them. Mine particularly, I bought a new one. It's a piece of junk. I wish to heck I didn't buy a new one, but I did. And last of all, well, I also want to point out, there's some major discrepancies being told to us about the garage issue versus the ADU issue. That needs to get clarified. And last of all, I think it's a misconception, this is on page 149, that the town is doing what it can do to welcome back former residents. I don't believe that's happening at all. I think it, what's, the way things are structured, it's encouraging major corporations to buy up lots and sell them to people that weren't here before. Thank you for the extra time.
The next card is from Randy Bymeyer.
And really, let's try to stay within the timeframe so we can get through this, please.
Good evening. My name is Randy Bymeyer. When we moved back to Paradise August of last year, we felt a sense of relief that we were finally home. Even the cat that survived the fire knew she was home, but she never wants to go outside ever again. I have heard most of you tell me how many times you want people to come back, so we did. Our property has trash, service, functioning septic, water, and power. It is clean, quiet, and peaceful, so we have no intention of going anywhere. We will rebuild, but just not in two months. I would like, if I may, I would like to quote a few words from some of the council members to remind you. November 17, 2018, Mayor Jody Jones told Mercury News that Paradise is a close-knit community. Paradise is not the buildings that were here. It's the people. So I don't want to lose my community. It was a special, unique community, and we can get that back, and that's what Paradise was all about. It's about the people. Did you say that just for the cameras? Or did you really mean it? By voting in favor of forcing residents off their property after telling people that they are what Paradise is about, what does that make you? Aren't we, people living in trailers, also part of this community? A little over two weeks ago, Mayor Steve Crowder told CNN News he's looking forward to every resident that wants to get home to get home, because it's still a great place to live. But the fire changed people. It didn't just take our stuff, it affected every one of us. It changed us. We are suffering from PTSD, depression, what have you, and we've watched abuses of FEMA and PG&E. So why do the council members want to continue abusing us by stressing us out even more? Is there a hurry to get people out of Paradise? I'm curious, is there anyone on the council that have investments in storage facilities, trailer parts, or other real estate investments that would affect us? Mr. Boland, your company Trilogy Construction wrote, put this on Facebook, April 28 of this year. "We understand that rebuilding on the ridge may not be the best option for you. If you are ready to explore selling your land, we'd love to talk to you." I feel this is a major conflict of interest, and you should recuse yourself, and your previous votes should be nullified on this matter. Your business would directly benefit if landowners were forced off their property and had to sell it cheap because of liens. You can't expect us to just abandon our properties and leave, to leave it vulnerable to criminals. Did you, most of the trailers I have seen are clean lots, with the exception of a handful, refuse to follow the rules. Deal with them. We are keeping a lot of businesses in Paradise alive just by being here. People are finally getting their preliminary permits and settlements, including myself. Don't you want those people to spend some money here in Paradise? I respectfully ask that you reconsider the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next card is from James Elfes. James Elfes.
Let's keep it civil, people.
Is James Elfes here? Okay. The next one is Mark.
Is it Hope Lightner?
Yes.
I'm Ned Hope Lightner, and I'll speak. Please. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I must say, and that's nice that you chose, or that one came up, that is powerful, and I would like to know more about the, I'm sorry. I would really like to know more about the conflict of interest with you, Greg, and what he read. That is very powerful and very upsetting. Back to what the people before me said, I really think it is powerful, the statement that you made. I believe that you meant it. And I, it made me cry because I love this place. I have my home back, but he doesn't. And he's a good man, and all his jobs are here. He lost them all for a long time. No money, none. I lost all mine. I worked for United Country, Maureen Johnson, I worked there. All my jobs were destroyed, but, but one. And I came back, and I, you know, if I would have went with FEMA, I'd be in Gridley or some other town. I wanted to be here. I can't build my life unless I am here. I speak for Mark Hope Lightner, that he's a hard-working man, and he deserves to be here. And yes, I agree. You've got people living like losers with junk and garbage. I mean, I saw some pictures. Yeah, clean it up, but don't penalize everybody. And for me to hear that people are worried about their property values just really does make me sick. And I did say a comment to somebody that, you know, "Oh, wow, that's your big worry of the day?" This place is going to be worth a lot eventually. It is. But I do believe this town, we need to care about all of them, not just the ones that were heavily insured, good insured, decent insured. I was underinsured, and if it wasn't for Erin and the Boys and Girls Club helping out to bridge my gap, I would be speaking for myself also. They helped me. I would have had to do whatever I could do myself, okay? When you have a manufactured home, they only insure so much, at least they did then, what I could afford, and I was paying triple of what people who had a stick built paid. So all I'm trying to say is that I do believe that this town, we should care about each and every one of them, even the ones that may have disappointed some. Like Jody, I know you said it was a choice to be insured. It was a choice to be underinsured. I thought it was a little bit much, okay? A little bit much. I don't respect that you look down on people of making a choice that, "Okay, you're penalized forever, forever." We belong here, too. I understand. And I just, I ask for you guys to take this in consideration. 270 people, after you weed out the ones that are violating, that's really not a lot of people to ask for this. It really isn't. Thank you.
Next card is Lawrence Graham.
My name's Lawrence Graham. I spoke last time at the meeting. Yeah, about being, I had no insurance, and I feel like I'm being punished for not having insurance. I know it was a foolish move. My house was there for 55 years. It could last if I paid off the credit cards. I just got done remodeling my whole house. I gutted it, put everything new, only thing I had left was $10,000 to pay off, and could have got insurance. Because I'm living on a low income, because I have COPD. I'm 61-years-old, and I do auto body for a living, and my lungs are fried. So I can't do what I've done my whole life for a living, so I'm having a hard time coming up with ways of making a living. That's why I didn't have insurance. I was worrying about either food or insurance. Now I'm paying the price. See, everybody else are building their brand-new homes. I feel happy for them, but on the other side, it's going, if I only. But now I'm going to be homeless because I didn't have insurance. I'm maintaining my property. I have power, water, everything you need, to have properties clean and tidy, and just need time, just need time. I mean, if I had money, I'd build right now, but I don't. Just need time, please. Two years, whatever it takes. If I had money in my pocket right now, I'd get it. Anyway, just if I had a dollar to do over it, I wish I would have had insurance.
The next card is Erna Reitberg.
Thank you so much for taking my comment today. I really appreciate it. I am a local Butte County resident of over 40 years, and I run Northern Belleie Catholic Social Service. I'm also the Disaster Case Management Chair for the Camp Fire Collaborative, and I also have the FEMA DCM, Disaster Case Management, that came in to help support the FEMA MAX Grants folks. So I wear lots of hats tonight, but what I really want to say is, as great as FEMA has been in a lot of areas, those MAX Grant folks got $33,000. And $33,000 way back when. That's not going to last you for too long. It's not going to make your life sustainable. It's not going to create housing options for you, or not many housing options for you. In addition, I also want to remind you, we got a really late start for disaster case management, considering the size and the magnitude of this event and the devastation. So thank goodness, our local community partners, and the Northville Community Foundation, and our DCM partner agencies, like Erin and the Boys and Girls Club, came in and they did a community-based case management that started in May of 2019. We didn't even have boots-on-the-ground FEMA DCM until September of 2019, and then we all know what happened in 2020. So we've had this long list. We haven't had enough disaster case managers. FEMA funded 14 DCMs. The rest of them have come from our local community partners that have provided that funding, and also from the state in AmeriCorps and the county. So I want to paint that picture because a lot of this, this is a tough, tough recovery to navigate. You know that. Imagine if you're disabled. Imagine if you're... Imagine if you have literacy challenges. Imagine if you're a single mom with three kids. Imagine if you're a senior citizen and you don't have any family. Those are our clients. That is who we are serving. This urgency ordinance is going to truly impact residents who want to be here. They want to be here and they do want to rebuild. Karen, or I'm sorry, Erin mentioned that she wants you to know that none of her clients that she's serving actually want to live in trailers or RVs. They want to build their homes. So please consider how long it took for Disaster Case Management to get here, the lack of the contractors. We know the cost of building is skyrocketing. We know we're in a housing crisis. Add on the layer and multitude of disasters. People are waiting on their funding. This PG&E settlement is taking an extraordinary amount of time. And then all of the grants and everything coming down from Cal Home Loans and CDVDR are just coming online. And DCMs are learning them. I mean, these are complicated grant opportunities for folks, but the DCMs have to learn them first before we can really explain them to survivors. So we're just asking for some more time. Thank you.
This card is from Greg Thomas.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. After hearing everybody else's comments, I don't really have much to add, so I'll try to keep it brief. Obviously, resident of paradise, my wife and I were lucky enough to be able to rebuild. We both fully support a two-year extension on the temporary use permits. We had a hell of a time finding a contractor. Our first contractor blew out his shoulder. Second, his business partner wound up with pancreatic cancer. Your company, we called you five times, didn't call us back. And I'm sure it's not because you didn't want to talk to us, it's probably because you had so many other phone calls that nobody could get to it. Our third contractor, the first estimate for our square footage was so astronomically high, my wife actually stood up, grabbed the pans, started walking out the building. So it takes, it takes time. We've got a lack of available contractors. We've got lack of funds from the Victims' Fire Trust, or the Fire Victims' Trust. We've had COVID that's shut down our country for a year and a half. And by the way, Delta's looking, it's going to, probably going to shut us down for another year before this is all resolved. Absolutely, extend this. These people want to be back in paradise. I'm doing everything I can to keep money up on this ridge. If I can, if I can buy it here in paradise, I stay here in paradise. I don't drive down to Chico. You know, if there's bad actors out there that aren't living, aren't abiding by the regulations, absolutely, find them, take them out of here. We don't want them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My last card is from Jennifer Christensen.
My name is Jennifer Christensen and I'm up here to voice my opinion because I live in an RV with two boys. One was trapped in the fire in the Optimal Parking Lot that day of November 8th. Almost died while I was at work, racing home to try to save my son, not knowing if he was dead or alive. Okay? I never made it to my house. I lost everything I owned. I lost my animals. I lost everything. My son was diagnosed with PTSD, transitional displacement. He has anger issues. He has emotional issues. And I spent two years trying to get him to a stable situation. And that was bringing him back to where it was that day. He is a normal kid with issues still to this day, but that is his home. And if you kick us out, you know what's going to do to that little boy all over again? He remembers every bit of that moment. He has night terrors. We've gone to counseling, doctor's appointments. Every day, it's not a struggle for him, but it's a struggle for me because I didn't hear from my son until nine o'clock that night, thinking my son was dead. It's really hard on us RVers and what we've gone through. I spent two years trying to get him to where he is today. And I just recently went back to work. I own my property. I have it surveyed. The septic passed. I removed all the trees. I have built my own fence. I have a $4,000 water system in my yard. I've paid for the backflow. I paid for PG&E. I have everything. I have water, everything you've asked for. And you want to kick me off my property so some hoodlum can come up here and steal my fence, steal my $4,000 water system that I paid for? Who's going to be there protecting? Just please, take it into consideration. It's not my fault PG&E burnt down my house. And I would feel a lot better if I burnt down my own house. But I didn't. And I've been treated, we all have been treated like we burnt down our town. I didn't burn down my town. And I'm still waiting for a settlement, just like everybody else is. But it's not fair that we may have been underinsured or, you know, or in the situation I'm in. I've applied for the grants. I've, and I've gotten rejected. So what am I supposed to do? You're not there to help people like us. You want to help the people that are low insured or things like that.
That was the last card I had on this item?
Comments, discussion?
I guess my thoughts are, you know, we have residents and I understand, and I think we've heard it a couple of times here, that we have a tendency to lump all of the people in RVs together. There are, there is an element that's causing problems for us that are here illegally, but there's also our residents who owned their property prior to the fire, who lived in their property prior to the fire, who have everything we've asked. You know, their, their water, their power, their septic, their trash. And I think we need to add weed control and things like that to that, to make sure the lots are cleaned up. But I would like to see a two-year extension, which would mean those people would have a temporary use permit. It would be five years post-fire. And then unfortunately, it just comes to a close. It never comes back before us again. That's the drop dead date. Five years past the fire, which is November 2023. And as long as there's no issues, no citations, and they're doing what they can do, I think give them that.
So are you talking, Rose, with conditions, without conditions? What are you talking?
Well, they have conditions, water, trash, electric. I think that, you know, most people here are, are either applying for grants or they're waiting for their settlements. I think we've gotten some, the information that I got on the settlements is pretty accurate with what people reported here. There's probably going to be a 30% that will get upfront. Who knows what the rate is going to be? But there are some pretty significant offers that are coming out for people. And so it could be the difference of them rebuilding or not rebuilding. It is what I'm seeing or thinking.
So again, no conditions of moving forward, conditions of moving forward, conditions of the PG&E settlement being a portion of moving forward? What are we?
Yeah, I mean, I think if they're applying for grants, they're, they're waiting on their, their settlement and those things, I think those are legitimate moving forward.
Thanks. They give me this? You guys touched my heart and I really know what it feels like. And I think everybody up here that had to escape that day, whether we had insurance or not, you know, I know I ran for my life. I didn't think I was going to. There's a couple of things that, and there's some people that weren't here tonight. One or two people spoke to some people, or spoke about some of the people. There's some people here that are not represented that are in this group. Renters that were renters here and were able with their FEMA money or however, by a relative giving them a piece of land or them buying a piece of land. They own the land. They're here. My belief is everybody that was a Paradise resident, I don't care whether you owned it or rented it or whatever, if you have the means, the intent, and you're doing everything that we ask you to do to come back here and be a part of this community, I want you to be here. I support the two-year thing. I would add some of the caveats and I would also give direction. I will never get agreement from this council up here, but I would also give a, a direction to staff to like go back and make this a regular ordinance so that when situations come up. Our staff needs to have some ability to deal with situations case by case. They have to have the, the authority to make an exception to whatever rule, law that we craft tonight or tomorrow or next month. There has to be that. There's a 94-year-old woman that's got a claimed property, she's in a trailer, she's not going to rebuild. She wants to live her days. And I don't care whether we extend this two years or 20 years or any of these other things we're putting in here, she won't be allowed to stay there. You know, that is not okay. She's, she's lived here all her life. I mean, there's a number, there's not a lot, there's maybe five or six people like that. There's maybe 50 renters that were able to procure property. Or what about the guy that the parents moved to Idaho and they gave their grandson and said, here, you can start your family and rebuild on our property, we're not coming back. We don't, we're not allowing for any of that. So whatever we pass tonight as a body here, and I'm going to advocate for the two-year extension, I would add some of the conditions. You got to show me you put in a claim with PG&E. But I want to also somehow, whether we do it tonight or we do it in a subsequent meeting, we have to give our staff the ability to deal with our residents on a case by case basis. I don't know what the lawyer will tell me, whether there's a way that we can do that. There has to be a way to, to make exceptions for this rule. Otherwise, we're not serving our citizens.
I agree that we have folks here in town who need more time. And I'm willing to talk about how we do that. But as Rose said, it's a limited universe, it's very limited. I would be, I think we're remiss if we don't also represent the other folks in town who aren't here. But I know they have opinions because they call me and they send me emails and letters. There's about 2,500 other residents of town. Some of you have said, take care of the bad apples. Way easier to say than to do. This council has been trying to do that for three years. We've abated one. We've had a handful leave voluntarily. So I'd like to see this coupled with some increased enforcement on those bad apples. The people who do not have temporary use permits would not be covered by any extension. And I'd like to see any extension that we did also say that in order to be covered by it, you have to have no violations by September 30th. I would be willing to give people time to resolve violations, but we have 24 of these that have temporary use permits and they're violating the conditions. And most of those are because they're not connected to septic, which is a health and safety issue for those other 2,500 people living in town. So I'm not sure about two years. We can talk more about that, but I would be willing to extend the ordinance for the people who have temporary use permits and no violations by September 30th. If our attorney can tell me how we can speed up enforcement on the folks who are not complying and can we couple that with this? So we say, all of you who are following all the rules and just need more time, you get to stay. And all, those who are not, you have to leave. What can we do? When we were interviewing you, you told us that there were ways we could speed this up.
We need to get control.
And I haven't seen that happen in the three or four months you've been here. So what can we do to sort of marry these two things?
So let me address one issue first and I would ask, I, I sometimes get in the position of de facto parliamentarian. So if I could, we need, we need to be able to have a good discussion among, among the council and staff. And so I would ask for people to please not, you know, shout out, you know, things and comments as, as people are talking. If you want a chance to grab a card and make a comment, do that. But, but I sometimes use the analogy, this is not like a baseball game where you, where you just get to, you know, shout out whatever you want, whenever you want. And I, and I, and so I would, I would ask for that, that level of respect. So we, we started, our initial contract was on, was on, was on, you know, on trees and getting that, you know, getting that process done. We can go as fast as, as the law will allow and as fast as we can get cases in. The problem isn't necessarily one of, of, when, when, when I hear the claims, get the bad actors out, you need to define for me what that is. What is it that, that you want for bad actors? Is it?
Okay, so that's everyone who doesn't have a temporary use permit?
And so, so for example, if you, if you were to give me categories and say, everybody without a temporary use permit, go after them. We can do that. I can dedicate resources to that and we can do that. But I need direction from this council to do that. And, and that's, and so I need, I need this council to be able to say, these are the categories or these are the specific, you know, items of code violations that we want you to go after. If you want to, you know, to, I'm, I'm looking on this. I know there was a slide before that had the number of
Violations.
Electric and water and, and
Sewer.
Septic or slash sewer. I'll say sewer, but that's it right there. If you were to say, these are the big ones that we want, these are the big three that we want you to go after. Okay, fine, then we can go through and sort what those are, we'll dedicate resources to it. We will go as fast as this council wants us to go. But we need to receive direction from this council as to what to do, what categories you want us to go after. And, and again, until there's some finality in that, I, my arms, my hands are tied until we get some direction as to where you want us to go. Happy to do it.
Okay. So my position then would be that I could support an extension for all of the people who have temporary use permits and no violations by September 30th. And that the council agrees that we give direction that people without temporary use permits or violations be prosecuted to the fullest extent that we can because otherwise we're allowing our town to be simply a campground.
Okay, you guys, this isn't going to be helpful because we, we need to come to a consensus here. So if, if we, we're human too. So if we feel a bunch of anger from you guys, it's not going to help us come to consensus. So please be respectful.
And, and again, we don't want to clear the room, so please, we let you talk, let us talk too. Please.
So Rose asked that this come back and whether the rest of us would consider looking at it again. So those are the things. So those are the things that are important to me, that I would need to see as part of a motion to be able to vote for an extension.
So I just... So what I'm understanding that you're saying is that everybody who currently has a temporary use permit, you're looking at giving them the extension. But in our language, in our motion, you wanna make sure that the people who, that we speed up enforcement of those people who do not have a temporary use permit and those people with temporary use permits who are in violation, we speed up enforcement on, on those two groups?
Correct.
Okay.
I would give the folks who have permits and current violations until September 30th to remedy those violations. And if they fix it, fine, they get to stay. If they refuse to fix it, then they're part of the problem.
Greg. First off, thank you for everybody that spoke. I appreciate that. And I really wanna thank the caseworkers for the work you're doing. I know that's gotta be heart-wrenching in many ways and very tough. And sometimes you probably don't feel like you're doing enough. So thank you for what you're doing and, and the help you're giving. So thank you for that. I would agree. I know there was one statement made, I think it was read, that there are gonna be more people displaced and need to come up. I hope in our, our discussions, this is not for more people to come and, and be on their properties or on property. I read that in one of the, one of the letters that came. And again, we, what we have is what we have to deal with. And I would, I would be in favor of us drafting, as Jody said, you know, they, they need... We have, we have rules and laws. Now, I know there's times that, you know, PG&E, they're not the fastest get out to your property. Trust me, I am experienced now. They're, they can be very slow. So I, you know, there's gonna be those circumstances, but there's gotta be movement. There's gotta be things moving forward. We've gotta be, we can't be just sitting here. And my concern really is the golden apple is, is PG&E settlement. Man, I hope that is. I, I pray, I pray that it is everything that people need. My concern is it's not gonna. And, and we can't, we have to, we have to assume that it is and it's just gonna get somewhere, but, you know, if whatever thing, whatever length of time we go, we can talk about that. I hope that it's, you know, we, you know, we need to get past and see what people are getting for their terminations and what they're actually receiving. But there's, there's gotta come an ending. Gotta be a finality to this where it is. Jody's right. There's a group of people here, and I appreciate hearing your hearts and your passion. That's important for us to hear. But equally, there are other people that didn't come tonight and have passion and hearts. And they, and unfortunately, the ones that we're hearing from, I'm hearing from, are next to the ones that are not living by the rules, not doing it right. And that's what we hear a lot of. Makes it very difficult. So there are a lot out there, but we need to have guidelines. We need people to do it right. And, and I've seen a lot of really nice situations. I mean, a lot of nice ones. Property is nice. They have all their hookups. Everything's done right. It's, it's, you can see that they're taking care of it. Love it. I think that's a great opportunity.
Can I just say how remarkable you are and Jody is this evening? Because I know this was, this is tough for you guys. And I just really appreciate the fact that you guys are being open and willing to look at a completely different stance than, than what you, what you originally had, you know, voted on. And thank you for that. I really, I just admire the two of you for doing that.
So my feelings before, I didn't believe that the PG&E settlement should be a condition of moving forward. I've changed my mind. I do believe that needs to be a condition. Nobody knows what that amount's gonna be, but I do believe that we have to let it play out and be a condition, and hopefully it will be what people need to get home, to rebuild a home. I have no doubt we need to extend the ordinance. There's currently about 6,100 people living in Paradise. And whether it's in a house or a trailer or an apartment, it really doesn't matter. All 6,100 of those people count. And we have to make a decision that is good for everybody. And I do, I do believe, whatever time it is, that this emergency ordinance does have to end because that's exactly what it was, was an emergency ordinance. And there is not another city in California that allows what we're doing right now, which is fine. They also haven't been through what you have, what we have. So we need to come to a timeframe, an agreeable timeframe. We, I believe we need to give you every opportunity that there is PG&E settlement, grant programs, you know, signed building contracts, manufactured home, whatever that might be. My, my feeling is, I'm thinking by the end of December of 2022, everybody should have a pretty good idea of the PG&E settlement, the grant program, what have you. And, you know, I've, I've heard the comments and, and I think I can speak for everybody up here. We really do want you all to come home and to, and, and to be able to rebuild and be part of this community and as you were before. I, I think that there's, there's a lot of anger out there and, and I get it. And part of it's justified and, and I think part of it isn't. But we're all trying to do the right thing for everybody. And no matter what we do, it's not gonna be the right thing for everybody. So it's not an easy decision, but I, I do think we need to extend the ordinance, no doubt. And I think we need to make the PG&E settlement part of the moving forward. And, you know, I, I guess we do need to work on, the, we have to be in compliance with our ordinance. I, I don't know that, how quick we can get rid of the people that aren't in compliance. To me, it's kind of a separate issue. We, we do need to do that, but that should not affect us extending the ordinance to everybody else. And that's kinda what I've got to say.
Okay, rebuttal time. I'm one of the people that has a home that I rebuilt, like some of you out there. I'm one of the 2,500 people that Jody mentioned, you know. It really bothers me because I, you know, the staff has done a fantastic job. They gave us reports. How many, how many of you all have temporary use permits? How many don't? The one lady that spoke, some part of what we did as we kept adding conditions to the temporary use permit over time is we said, "Okay, Steph, don't issue anymore. So if you happen to buy your property after June of 2020, you couldn't get one." Especially whether you were a former resident or not. We have an alliance or an allegiance. We, we have a responsibility. A Paradise resident, period. Renter, homeowner, whatever. That's my belief in my soul. So staff gave us all these numbers of how many permits are, how many people in violation, how many people without permits, all that stuff. All I've heard from my colleague up here is, "There are 2,500 people that are living in a home." And I keep getting letters and postcards and everything. I haven't seen a one. My phone number is posted all over the place. Nobody that lives in a home has called me and complained about a trailer next door to them. No, no one I've heard a complaint from is my colleague Jones, and I've heard Mr. Crowder because he had somebody that was kind of a slimeball living next door to him and breaking a bunch of rules. And I've seen that, you know. So, so those are things. We had prior to this attorney, I mean, my colleague tells me, this is her priorities, and she chastised me one meeting because I was saying what I thought our public works director, who he should hire, and it wasn't up to me. Well, just like she told me that night, she's only one vote. And, and one of my, one of my problems here is that we had an attorney that months ago, we gave direction and they came and it was before we had our current attorney. This was six months ago as part of the complaint she had, was, hey, they had six cases, trial cases to go for abating. And that was gonna be, show us how the courts were gonna work. We did one. We haven't heard a word about the other five. So now you folks that are, have temporary use permits that may or may not have a violation, you know, suddenly you're gonna be, you know, again, I, I'm all for extending it. I don't wanna put a whole bunch of individual conditions on it. Maybe what we need to do is, what we were asked tonight on this agenda item was give direction to staff. So if they're gonna bring it back at the September meeting so that we can extend it before the deadline comes up, fine. Then the direction we wanna give to staff that we all need to concur on is like, do you wanna put in Jody's things that she wants in there? Do you wanna put Rose's things in there? Steve's things and mine? We're gonna put all of our things there? Only thing I wanna do is I wanna, I wanna make sure that whatever we do, it's for you the citizens, and I want that staff that we have working for us, which are wonderful people that have to deal with you guys when you come in all angry. I wanna make sure that they have the opportunity to make the exception because we're, these people aren't talking about any of the exceptions out there. They're just talking about the people that we allowed to get a permit before we cut off permits. But what are you gonna do about the person that got some FEMA money and bought a piece of land and has done everything we, that's in the rules? And we go in and say, "Can I get a permit?" And they say, "No, we're not issuing permits." We're not made... You want residents of Paradise to come back? Then open the doors.
So let me, let me ask, let me ask our attorney a question. How would you handle Woody's question as far as exceptions? I mean, if we create an ordinance and we have guidelines for there, and, and I, I don't necessarily disagree that maybe there does need to be some exceptions, can you do it? And how would you do it?
So you, you can do it. You, you, there are two ways to get it done. One is to define in advance what the exceptions are, what do you want to see included, and include them in the ordinance order. And, and then staff can work through those. And again, as you define them, of course, as it's on the agenda, it's, it is to give direction to staff. So once you tell us what you believe those are, then we can start defining them and working through what we see as some, are some of the issues, and then come back and get, get some concurrence before you get the final version of the ordinance at the next council meeting. Another way to do that, a, a, what I will call a more creative way to do that, but potentially, how do I put it? I, I can see that it may be more problematic is, and I think the problems will become evident here in a moment. Another way to do it is to say that anything that's outside of the ordinance has to come back to, to council at, either you can assign a, a committee of two council members or you can create what I'm gonna call an exceptions committee. And so the problem with that is, under the law, you have to treat everybody in an equal, even-handed, level playing field manner. One of the thorny issues with that is someone will say, "Well, but this person got X and I didn't get X." Now, the reality is usually, most times when I dig into those claims, the reality is someone heard that someone got X and they really didn't, but you know how that phone tree game where one person tells another and they tell another and tell another and tell another? Suddenly it's, the town paid for this guy's home. And, and that's not what happened, right? But, but you know, again, the, the story changes when it goes from one person to the next to the next. So there are some issues with that second method. It's not my favorite, but, but if that's the pleasure of, of the council, we can make that work.
The, the problem that I see is no matter how careful we try to do this, six months from now, we're gonna say, "You know, this should have been in there." Because I've seen it with our, as we, as our ordinance has evolved now, that's, that's happened. There's things that should have been in there that weren't. There's probably things that were in there that shouldn't. And no matter how careful we do this, I think we're gonna do the same thing. So part of what Woody says, I, I do, I, I'm gonna stop short of saying every single case needs to be an exception. But, but I do know that we're going to run into some where it's, it's, it's gonna require some sort of exception.
Let me, let me take, let me take a different approach on the, the second option that I just gave you. What you could also do is you could have an exceptions committee who hears the exception that, that falls outside of what's allowed to do. And the exceptions committee can determine, should this be something that goes back to council for a waiver or a variance or some, or some other legal remedy for that individual? Again, not a perfect scenario, but, but...
Slippery slope.
It's less of a slippery slope than just allowing a committee to make exception and giving them the authority to make. That's a much less, less slippery.
Mayor Crowder, may I ask a question really fast? Scott, is it possible that we could remand the exceptions to commission since they meet monthly already and they would actually be the appeal body for any temporary use permit under the normal zoning ordinance?
Well, you couldn't remand it to them, but you could, you could in the ordinance give the, give the direction to them. The problem is a planning commission wouldn't have the ability to override the ordinance.
Got it. Okay.
And so that's, that's sort of the, the, you know, the sticky problem is only a council can override a council's ordinance.
Makes sense, though if, I guess if they wanted to give a recommendation?
If they could absolutely do that, they could give a recommendation. They could, yeah.
Only because they already exist? They already meet monthly?
Sure. That, that, that could be the, what I, that could be the council committee, so to speak. The planning commission could operate in that capacity to look at and say, "Yes, we recommend this goes to council for consideration of an exception for the ordinance."
Your thoughts, Krieger, on that? Like that idea?
Yeah, and you're talking about like there, I mean, I'm not saying a blanket thing. I'm saying we could actually establish some criteria. I'm thinking about the 97-year-old and 95-year-old, thinking about the renter that bought some property but now cannot get a, he's completely compliant or she is, but now cannot get a permit because we changed the ordinance six months ago saying, "We're not gonna issue permits no matter what you're doing." How do we welcome those citizens back in town? So whether it's an appeal process, I just want your staff to, you know, whatever we end up doing on this extension, to have the, there has to be a way, there are gonna be exceptions, like Steve said. There's things in there that we've already found out. That's why we kept adding things, you know. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if there's a way to do it without it being a slippery slope where, I mean, because there's gonna be some legitimate, there might only be six or 10 out of all of it. But right now, the way we're headed, there's absolutely no, no way for those six or 10 people that would, would have a legitimate request to even be considered.
So the, the request in this was to give direction. My question is, Kevin, do you, do you have direction? Do you, do you kinda know or...
I'd like to make a motion.
Actually, I was...
That I think would incorporate what all of us have been saying.
I was gonna, I was gonna do the same thing.
Well, let me try, okay? So the motion would be to extend the ordinance to April 30th, 2023. Now, that's in between Rose's date of November and your date of December. I don't wanna go with December because we'll be telling people to leave at Christmas. That just, I don't like that. So April 30th, 2023, that gives people a lot of time. They should know what their PG&E settlement is gonna be.
That's about a year and a half.
Yes. So extend the ordinance to April 30th for people who have temporary use permits without violations by September 30th. violations by September 30th. Institute an exception committee. I'm not real comfortable sending it to the commission. They haven't heard all the discussion here. I'd like to see that committee be to council people. Waive the thresholds. I think that those just make things difficult for staff. Anybody who has a temporary use permit without violations gets to stay till April 30th, 2023. Add in, if you've got two violations in a year or two citations, your temporary use permit is going to be revoked. And give direction to our attorneys to increase enforcement on the people with violations and those that don't have temporary use permits and do not receive exceptions. I think that covered everything.
Can I ask a question? What about one of the conditions being that you've applied for the PG&E?
Oh, I said waive all the, waive all the conditions.
Waive all the conditions.
Yeah, no conditions.
So.
But they still have to own their property. Is that true?
Yeah, they still have to meet all the, they have to own the property, they have to have PG&E, they have to have the conditions, the thresholds where you have to have a contract or a mobile home contract, those things. That, I think that just makes it complicated.
Right, I do want to clarify though, that the 288 temporary use permits that are active right now, that is a combination of owner occupied and renter, friend, family occupied.
I understand that.
Okay, and that's okay, right?
Yes, in my motion it is.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
And so the, so just so I get clear on this, because I like your motion. So, the people I'm talking about that maybe have bought some property that don't have a permit, that, that now own property and are residents, they can go through this commission or this.
This exception committee.
They can go that way to make that case, or the 95-year-old that isn't going to rebuild. So they can go there. That's a way for them to get in the game?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was clear, because that thing I.
Would you consider extending, I, I know you said April of 2023, five days, or five years post campfire would be November 8th of 2023. Would you be willing to go to that? That would give them two, that would give them full five years post fire, and then no more temporary use permits at all.
I was trying to go in between your date and this, so that's, April 30th is my suggestion.
Are we doing consensus to have something brought back? Are we, that's what we're doing right now?
Yes. We would like direction and, and try to be very clear on your direction.
Through consensus.
Yep.
To give you direction.
Yes.
So I got all of your notes, Jody. So, at this point, if there's, she was making a motion, so I guess if there's anybody.
Second, I'll second.
This is not a.
We're not doing. Oh, yeah, I didn't think we knew, it's just direction.
So I would can, yeah, I give consent. I mean, I think that's good direction. You guys come back and we can massage it when we come back and.
And during that time, as we, the other thing that you, that staff suggested is that we can have, because it's rebuilt, like you said it, Greg, Paradise is going to be a construction zone for five more years or better, right? So maybe we need to come back, not right away, you know, not in September, but have further discussion on, on making a regular, what was, what'd you call it?
Oh, the zoning ordinance versus urgency?
We need to incorporate something, maybe we need to freshen up our zoning ordinance so that, because we got situations that are going to happen, you know, like we need to look at, why can't you park your RV on your property?
Well, if you're thinking of taking this out of the merge ordinance.
No, 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 I'm not talking, I'm talking about let this thing go. But I'm just saying, as further discussion, we may want to look at some of the things we're learning with this in rebuilding our town and people coming back.
Let's take one bite at a time. You're way beyond.
All right. I was just trying to move forward.
I know.
You know, because moving forward is part of this discussion.
Okay, so do you have what you need?
I do believe I do, thank you.
Are we, that's, I just want to go down the aisle if we're, if we're good with that direction and we, and moving forward, and I'll start with Rose.
Yeah, so I, I think this is kind of what we were, what I would like to see. It's kind of where we originally started. I would have liked to see it past, five years past campfire, but four and a half is good because now we're also including the people who are renting versus just having it be the people who own their property. So there was, I think, some nice give and take in consensus, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Woody, you're good?
Yeah, because we're going to, there's going to be a mechanism for the staff to deal, you know, for us, for, to deal with exceptions, because we know there's.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Crowder?
I'm good with that.
Good? Jody made the motion, I'm assuming she's good. Greg, good. Thank you very much. I think we have direction. I, I just want to make one clarification too, and then maybe Susan could help me with this, is that this temporary use permit, basically, once you pull your housing permit, you're out of this, and you have the opportunity at that point in time to actually stay on your property through the time of rebuild. So, we're, this, this just getting you to that permitting portion, and once you get that permit, we're, we have, now you have that additional time available to, to build your.
Right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council.
Thank you all for coming, man.
Let's, let's take a five-minute break.
Hey.
Yes, they have selected.
This doesn't prohibit cities from, this doesn't prohibit cities and towns from making laws about how you live on that property. You are correct, it doesn't say that. It also doesn't say that cities and towns can't put in place regulations and do just that. You have to comply with the regulations of the town.
No, their regulations override the right.
No, this, this right doesn't exclude, this doesn't exclude towns and cities from enacting regulations to regulate how you are on that property.
For headache, yeah? I get migraines, I carry them. I took them before I left the house.
They were expecting a lot of these. They're interested. Pushed out, ready to be done. Which includes. They expected. Okay. Yes, I think we're good. On what topic? That guy in the back with the tan shirt, that's the guy you're going to want to talk to.
Where everybody go? We're just about to start talking trash and everybody left.
Okay. So, let's get, let's get started. So, item 6B, consider providing staff with direction on further desired amendments to the solid waste franchise agreement. Susan?
Mayor Crowder, oh, I lost mine.
You have mine?
I lost mine.
Oh, David.
Okay. Amy, council, so this agenda item is about the solid waste franchise assignment, which was last, where by the.
Just a quick history, on May 27th, there was a special council meeting that the council was asked to consider the assignment of the current solid waste franchise from NRWS to waste management. Council at that time did not adopt a resolution of assignment, but provided feedback to waste management regarding a submission of proposed, a resubmit, a proposed amendment. On June 14th, the revised proposal was submitted. Staff, after reviewing and discussing with both waste management and Northern, staff concurred that it did not meet the council's criteria and the amendments were not brought forward. On July 13th, a third revised proposal was received from waste management with a request from NRWS to bring that forward to the council for consideration. As previously discussed, the proposed franchise agreement amendments are for six specific sections of the agreement. The term of the agreement, the HHW facility, that also includes the e-waste and buyback center, the disposal, transfer and processing facilities about where all these materials are taken, the street sweeping section, the section about office and truck yard, where they're located, and as well as the green waste yard. With the term of the franchise agreement, the proposal that the council heard at the end of May, that was submitted, May 12th, is that first column there. Then there was a June proposal that did not come forward to council, and the current proposal is now, instead of an automatic 10-year extension on the existing 2027 term, it's just asking for 10 years from date of assignment. So that works into just over a four-year extension, if approved, with a one-time, three-year extension that would be possible. And that's existing language in the agreement. And it's based on a customer satisfaction survey as well as being in compliance with our state reporting. For the HHW, the e-waste and the buyback center, at the first proposal is about removing all language regarding the operation of those facilities. The current proposal is showing having two household hazardous waste events for the, during a year, but no buyback center. Disposal, transfer and processing, originally, the request was to use any fully licensed and permitted site, but with the feedback both from staff and council, that's been amended now to show that a solid waste would stay at the Neil Road facility as requested, but recyclables and yard waste could go to any permitted facility. Street sweeping, these were just minor text amendments where language was being added that just said up to 1,300 annual miles. After conversations between waste management and the town, those, that text amendment now has been additionally modified to say up to 1,300 annual curb miles as directed by the town. It's also in response, knowing that we have some road construction coming up and making sure they're not in violation if they can't get to every mile because of construction Yes, I'm, absolutely.
Define curb miles for me?
That was added new. I, I wouldn't dare to define that for you.
Thank you.
It would be with curb appeal. No, I'm just.
Yes, road miles.
I was going to say, because not all of our roads have curbs.
Oh. I hear what you're saying.
Historically, when, when the extension came up, the 10-year extension with NRWS, the town requested that we add street sweeping to the contract. And, and all of the public roads, pretty much all of the roads in the town were added to that, which absolutely made no sense because at that particular time when everybody had money and we had a street sweeper, you know, we were doing Roe Road, Wayland Road, we're doing roads that, you know, it was just, so that was kind of, we added it in there. Yeah.
So are you saying that Roe and Wayland should?
No, well, the, and the argument made by our director was, well, you know, you got to have the center line and the fog line. Some of those roads don't have fog line. They do have center.
So curb miles is intended for, it's unique for street sweeping. If you go up one side of the street, you get half of it, you go down the other side of the street, you get half of it. The argument, and unfortunately, this has been litigated, the argument is, well, is that street, do you count it once or do you count it twice because you went up one side and down the other?
And they also do the middle.
And so they, and so curb miles is intended. And so, and so curb miles is intended to cover one trip up one side and down the other.
So they just sort of cut the contract in half?
They doubled, no, they doubled their money.
Depending on your perspective, they either cut the contract in half or they double.
They doubled their money.
Either way, it's intended, it's intended to clearly calculate that going up.
Do you mind if I say something to this item?
Sure.
Really quick. So, the way that it's read here is consistent with how it's been implemented the entire time. Our street sweeping schedule is based on lane miles, curb miles, kind of same thing. Whereas Clark Road, we know that's gonna take five passes. So that's been accounted for five, for every one mile of Clark as five curb miles or lane miles. I use lane miles more day-to-day than curb miles. But you understand the intent, and I wanna say there's been no, no reduction in services other than we, well, not other than. And my caveat is that this language gives the town flexibility. One, to realize that we may not need the full 1,300 and they're not gonna be in default if not, if they don't sweep 1,300. We don't have 1,300 miles. We have a schedule that's reasonable and we want, we like this because it provides the flexibility to provide the sweeping where we need it, when we need it. Up to 1,300 miles, curb miles.
But if we don't, this language they're proposing, it does, I mean, the whole street sweeping part of the franchise agreement is intact. If, if we don't approve this assignment, if we stay with Northern or if we go with another company, we would probably make this more specific in our original franchise.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with this language for any vendor providing this.
Right, no matter who's doing it.
Correct.
Thanks.
Office and truck yard. Originally, that was proposed to use a regional office and truck yard as Waste Management is located locally at Chico. With the discussion that happened at the special council meeting in May, council was very direct in their desire to have calls handled locally and not referred to, I believe it's Arizona. The current proposal is still talking about a regional office and truck yard, but now it's specifically striking existing language requiring local calls to be directed to the local office. Green waste yard. The original proposal is to remove the surcharge from the commercial accounts for the operation of the green waste yard in anticipation of not reopening the yard. The June proposal that did not come to council was a proposal to reopen the green waste yard when residential accounts reached 75% of the pre-fire accounts with a mutually agreed upon gate rate. If we were to final 350 to 400 homes a year, which is what we're averaging, it would take us over 10 years to get to pre-fire, to 75% of pre-fire accounts.
That's aggressive. That's aggressive.
Right, that's aggressive. And so, there would be even a possibility that during the time that the franchise was awarded, that the green waste yard would just never be operational. So the current proposal, while not better, it's different. The proposals at the cost of operating the green waste yard would be subsidized in its entirety by the commercial account. And so in the staff report was the math about if it truly cost as much as NRWS had anticipated after the fire to run it per month, which is around 40,000 versus the 320-ish commercial accounts we have, that's the potential of up to 125 additional dollars a month on each of those commercial accounts.
Additional.
Yes, sir. On top of basic service.
That, that's an absolute ludicrous proposal on their part.
So tonight, council action requested is to provide staff with direction on further desired amendments to the solid waste franchise agreement to present to Waste Management and bring back or consider adopting a resolution authorizing the assignment, which is included in the staff report. And this is just a breakdown again of those six items and what the most recent proposal looks like. And this is based on council's direct feedback in the May meeting, staff's feedback at our June conference call, and then the most current iteration. So staff is just looking for some consensus on each one of these points. And I'll leave it with this and open it up to any questions from council. And, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Are there cards? I just wanna let you know that there is representation from both Waste Management and Northern available.
Where do you start?
We have cards. Yes, we have cards.
Let's start there, good start.
There you go.
Okay, so the first email I have is from Andrea Peterson. Says, I saw on the, are, are that the council is considering contracting with Waste Management. I live in Chico and was told I would have a green waste container on July 2nd. I have emailed and phoned. To date, no container. If you read their reviews, many do not even have trash containers. They say they are backlogged because of COVID. If so, then why are they going to add Paradise as clients? We had North Valley Waste Disposal for years and no problems. Then Chico decided to grant a monopoly to Waste Management. Ugh, you might want to continue searching for a reliable company. And we had an email comment sent in by Steve Rodewick, but he is here and he would rather speak. So you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Crowder, members of the council, Steve Rodewick, retired Butte County Recycling Coordinator and Paradise resident. You all have my letter and I'm willing to address any clarifications or questions you might have on that. But I wanted to just bring up two points. One of them I didn't even make on the letter is the call center. Remote versus local. A remote call center is a substantial drop in the level and quality of customer service. And I'm not revealing any company secrets, and this is not a knock on Waste Management. It's just true for any company that has a phone system. Local is better than 800 miles away. It, it's not a stretch to realize that somebody who knows the community, lives in the community, by community, I mean county, has a better handle on what's going on in the company than somebody many, many hundreds of miles away. I used to take calls, complaint calls from residents as a recycling coordinator about all companies. My response was, let me email the DM and we'll get it clarified. Once it got to decision maker, the problem was rectified. It's that disconnect between a remote call center and the service on the ground. That, that's my little diatribe on the call center. We, as a town, could probably make a stand and say, no more regional call centers. And if they hire two or three more people locally, all the better. And they might even include Chico and Gridley and Biggs and the rest of the unincorporated area as a Butte County call center, and they might even add Corning and hire more people. Second bullet point, buyback drop-off. We need a buyback drop-off center on the ridge. If we, if we place those buyback center there, we would have customers from Sterling City to Butte Valley, and we'd probably draw up some Chico customers too, because their options are limited as well.
They were gone. It was gone last Thursday.
They called Friday.
We, we would have a monopoly on buyback on the ridge.
They were backed up all the way to the freeway trying to get in there for the last day.
With the exception of Oroville, we would be it. So whether that's done through the franchise hauler or if it's a third-party nonprofit that we use some funds to subsidize them, whether it be property or whatever, there are organizations on the ridge that are probably more than willing to do that with a little help. So maybe this option on the table is the best option, but we don't know until we go out and explore what's out there. If we don't, then we've taken everything off the table for a long period of time, a number of years. And I just wanna say, your meetings are a lot more exciting than parking wreck.
We don't like that though.
Any other cards, Tina?
I have one card from Joe Catalago.
You're up.
Good evening, council. Joe Catalago with Waste Management. I manage our contracts that we have with the city of Chico, Butte County, Gridley and Biggs, as well as Plumas County. On the screen over there is Joe Casson. He's with our business development team, who's been working diligently with staff on working all these details out. I did wanna address the, the call center piece. I know we, when we, in our proposal, we talked about local. Regional to us means, means local. So our calls would be going to the Chico office. We do have overflow to another site if we do, but we do have staff onsite in Chico. That would be a regional solution. So that's where we're, that's one amendment that we would make to this. So that the calls would get a local staff first. I do agree with the gentleman here who discussed about how the local, the local operation folks know that the customer's the best. We do agree with that. I can, I can attest that our local staff knows every customer. We know the routes, we know all of what the issues are. We're a lot more quick on our feet to get the services done as opposed to going through a, going through a more convoluted process outside of the region. So we would do pledge to have the calls go to our Chico office to service Paradise to be, be awarded this contract. I'm gonna take it over to Joe to talk about, about the green waste yard. About, and it's really just, I think we're pretty close on these last couple items that are a concern. And I think we're, we can talk about it a little more. So Joe, or you can talk.
Yep, good evening, everyone. Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Joe Casson. I'm VP of Business Development for Waste Management. I would normally be there in person, but we've got travel restrictions due to COVID. So thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us out. And we're certainly open to trying to work, you know, obviously our goal is to work this out so it works best for the, the town and the community. We are acquiring the facility in Paradise, so we will continue to maintain that office. And I think when Joe talked about the call center and calls staying locally, it's only in a time that it's gonna kick over to our actual call center that's out of state as if somebody's on lunch break or the phones are busy. Other than that, we will have somebody within the area, whether that's Paradise or Chico, answering the calls. With regards to the green waste processing facility, we realize it's not, it's not open today. There was a $4.35 per commercial business to subsidize that based on today's business count that was coming out to about $22,000 per year. We're open to figuring out a way that, to keep it open, keep it there for the, the community. We just need to work with staff and kind of work through what the economics are of it. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions if you have any for me.
I, I kinda have a statement. It just, from looking at what you guys proposed and what we had, had asked for, I mean, I, I'm, I fully understand negotiations, but I mean, we're, we're miles apart. I mean, we're not even close. And it, to me, asking a residential customer to pay an additional $125 to, to cover the, the green waste is, is, I'd be embarrassed to ask them that. Commercial, sorry. And it, it just, it, it just doesn't seem like there was a lot of thought put into this, or not a lot of thought for what we asked, put in this proposal. It just, we're so far apart. It's, I, I just don't know how, how we can get there, you know, unless you guys are willing to really look at it, at least get in the ballpark of what we've asked.
Absolutely, and, and we'd like to have more time with staff to work this out. We did have one staff meeting prior to submitting this proposal, and then it came straight to council. We also know that there was an RFP that went out on the streets a couple of months ago for the operation of the green waste facility. It's my understanding that maybe the results weren't favorable or there just weren't any results. But yeah, we are, we're open to figuring that out. And, and hopefully there's a solution there.
So, go ahead. I'm kind of with Steve. It's been, we last talked about this in May. So there, there's been quite a bit of time for you to figure that out with staff if you really wanted to. I'm very unimpressed with how your company has listened to this council. I don't think you listened to us at all, and that's during the time that you're trying to get a contract with us. So after you get the contract, I don't expect that you'll be any easier to work with. So I don't really wanna go through each of these items one by one. I personally would simply reject this.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Jody and Steve. And it's, it almost feels a little disrespectful in a sense because I mean, we actually put some thought into what we need and we understand you're a business and you need to make money. But we also have residents here who have been through a lot. And, you know, we're trying to rebuild. And so we wanna partner with people who wanna come alongside us and help us do that. We're, we don't wanna be in a position where someone thinks that we're gonna take leftovers. So we've been through enough, want people that'll partner with us and help us come back. Putting this type of onerous on our commercial accounts, that's not gonna happen.
I have nothing to say. I mean, I don't like.
Okay, I got a couple of things to say. I agree with all of my colleagues here, and it's very seldom that we all agree. But we were unanimous in the direction that we gave to our staff. And you guys were given that direction. And I know I checked with the town manager to make sure in your negotiations that our staff didn't deviate from that direction. We were very clear, the first item about, there's no extension. If you're successful in buying the company from NRWS or NAPA or whoever you're dealing with, then you get, and you, we were to award the assignment, you would get what's left on the franchise, period. And that's it. And that was the direction we gave, and we're not gonna budge on it. Nor are we gonna budge on the other things. Now, there's some really erroneous stuff that's going on out there. I've talked with city councilmen in the city of Chico that are very unhappy with some of your tactics in that community. As far as when a lid on a garbage can is propped up, you photograph it and the customer gets a fine from Waste Management. We're not gonna put up with any of that stuff in this town. Now, I don't know, that's there, not here. But a lot of the things that we put in this franchise agreement, just so you know, because I'm not sure you were, maybe you were with Waste Management. Back when this was originally written, all of these conditions were put in here because Waste Management had 80% of our customer base during that time when we had three haulers in town. And these conditions were created because of the complaints we got about the service we got from Waste Management. So adding a, a surcharge onto the green waste yard, you didn't even address the recycling thing. And there's no other, there's none left in this community. You know, I'm an absolute, I'm gonna stick to my guns, the direction we gave to staff. You guys wanna meet with them, but those are the conditions we asked you to come up with. And, and, you know, oh, you're only gonna roll it over to Phoenix whenever somebody's on lunch or something. And you're gonna keep one person employed in the office up here and turn on the air conditioner and lights for one person to answer the phones up here? I don't believe you. I don't trust you, I don't believe you.
The one thing that I would like to say though, given the extension, if you guys were to, to get this and do a great job, I, I don't know why, you know, we wouldn't extend it. So I, I don't know why that's such a, a, a big issue with, with Waste Management. Again, you perform and, and do a good job. There's no reason for us to look anywhere else. So, you know, that's, that's kind of my feeling on that.
I kinda agree. I mean, give us a reason to extend, we'll extend. I mean, if you're doing a good job and you're working with us, it's not a problem. I, I will say, our staff has a pretty good idea of where we're coming from, so I would work with them.
Can we, can we go out and get, ask for other? We can't, okay? I didn't say that.
I did wanna mention to Waste Management, when they made this proposal this July 1st, they did ask to go over this with staff first. It was really at Northern's request that we're here. They, they just wanted it on the agenda. So to Joe's credit, he's been asking every time, please let's talk at it at a staff level first, before it comes to you. So I just wanted you to know that. It was at Northern's request that we just go straight to council.
Thank you for clarifying that. And thank you, Joe.
But it was also, it was also when you initial, that initial proposal, your first meeting, staff, our staff, based on our direction, told them that it was so out of the ballpark. meeting, staff, our staff, based on our direction, told them that it was so out of the ballpark, they weren't even going to bring it to us. So they all knew that. So they didn't modify it hardly at all.
And you're right, not justify the proposal.
So why, you know, kind of the direction you use, like, if that's all they're going to bring to you, just, you know, it doesn't fly. And I get what Northern did.
Why did Northern insist?
Yeah.
Because there's a few things going on here, and I got to be careful about what I say probably.
Well, we can't duck them up.
Well, you know, they, Northern was losing money. So we made a bunch of deals with the town right after the fire. So we cut out some of the things. So Northern was losing money. So they have a CFO that when the pandemic hit and all of the, the partner, the partner groups that were subsidizing Northern and NRWS, suddenly lost revenue.
I'm not sure that, let's, yeah.
All right. I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying, why did Northern insist it came here? Do we know that?
Because, because they want to move forward. They just want to move forward. They either got to make this deal with Waste, make the sale complete.
That was direction given to us.
And which is contingent upon us.
So they're, they're asking us yes or no?
They asked us to bring this forward to council.
And they're asking us for a yes or no on what?
They're asking you guys to make a decision based on the proposal that was placed in front of us.
That seems pretty easy.
So then I would say we don't need to be used as a pawn between these two organizations that are figuring out their.
This isn't an acceptable proposal.
I move, I move, then I'll move that we reject it. There you go. Okay.
Bowlin and Cullerton?
Yes.
Move to reject the proposal. Roll call vote. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
The motion is rejected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe, thank you for being on with us this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you for your time. I hope you didn't have to be here that whole time, watch us. I feel for everything you're going through. I was.
Okay, item 6C. Consider adopting resolution number 21.
37.
37, a resolution of the Town Council of Town of Paradise awarding a contract for Skyway and Pearson Road traffic signal repair. Is that Mark, you first, Jessica? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Crowder, Council. Again, my name is Mark Maddox, Public Works Director for the Town of Paradise. I'm just going to pull up Google Street really quick.
Who's baby?
Who's baby?
What's that?
You guys see what was on there?
Oh, Andrea's family had the baby. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah. What is it? Oh, that's Louie. Oh, is that our webpage?
Well, that's our Intranet for town employees.
That's Louie's. Oh, that's cool.
So, okay, the item before you is relating to the traffic signal at Skyway and Pearson Road. I am pulling up this Google Street View because immediately following the fire, this was our most heavily impacted signal. We all know this normally would have a steel mast arm and signal equipment in better condition. But it was damaged by the fire. And we've recently, just about five weeks ago, received a notice to proceed from insurance that they are going to pay for the project. So we brought it before you for approval of the plans and specifications. We put the project out to bid. We received three bids for the project. I apologize. Yes, three bids, with the low bidder being Bear Electric Solutions of Alvisio, California.
We've used them before, right?
Yeah, actually Bear Electrical is our current vendor for preventative maintenance and repairs on an on-call basis. And they have been for quite some time. They do great work. Their low bid is $254,710. I do have an overall budget that I would like to go over with you. So with that, we've identified a 10% contingency, 15% for construction management. So the overall cost is $318,387.50. And this item will be paid for entirely by our insurance infrastructure provision. Actually, not just our infrastructure provision, but we had a separate policy line item for traffic signals. So the entire project and repairs will be funded through insurance. The scope of the project will remove and replace Hardscape, install new traffic signal poles, get rid of these wooden poles on the side of the roads. They will, the signal poles will be placed to be compatible with any future modifications of Skyway further off of the road. It will be ADA compliant. We will get rid of a lot of the, the different fire damage features there at that corner. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. My question, did, I don't know if Kevin talked to you about it. We did that survey on the master road plan and everything. And part of some of the options for this, this section of Skyway were to remove some bulbouts depending on what we finally end up doing. And that's my concern. There's bulbouts on both sides. Are we going to replace those with this? Or are we going to, you know what I mean? I hate to put them back in there if they're in your final design.
Yeah. No, we won't be putting in new infrastructure that is going to be, could be potentially replaced. And so with that, we will ensure the project will be compatible with any future design or modification of Skyway between Pearson and Elliott. So I don't believe the, the bulbouts will not be replaced at this point.
That's what, that's my question. Are we going to put them back there or do we take them out while we do this?
Yeah, the signal poles, right now, on, on this, on this side of Skyway.
Right.
The signal pole is here. We are envisioning the signal pole will be closer to the back edge of the sidewalk to ensure that we still have an ADA walkable path of travel. And no matter what vision of the project or for the downtown Skyway it comes up with.
So that bulbout will be removed or just left there until future?
So the bulbout will be removed. It will be removed. And, yep. The bulbout will be removed. And, but I will speak to the survey. So we received over 800 responses. I'm not sure if we've had a survey receive that many, but we're really excited about that. And so my goal will be to bring back some recommendations or synthesize that data for you and get some direction on policy and direction for future projects, whether it's the island in front of Town Hall or downtown Skyway. So we'll continue to have those discussions. But with this project, although the current bid shows the concrete being removed and replaced as it is because it's fire damage.
Right.
We have the capacity to issue a change order that would reduce costs and reduce the bulbout size or just pave it back. So we will ensure that the project implementation includes a flexible.
So I'd just be careful because you got that turn lane over here. And I've gone up Skyway and people just go right straight through that turn lane and swerve over. So you start doing, you start playing with that, you're going to have some issues.
Understood.
But that wasn't currently.
No, I'm talking about over here.
So he's talking about northbound, right turn only traffic. Sorry, I'm trying to get a good view.
And what they do is they, they want to beat you and, and get over. And so you start modifying that to make it towards easier for people to jet through there. You're, you're going to have people racing. So I've, I've experienced that a couple of times.
If we need to, we can certainly place temporary, a temporary bulbout with like parking stops. That would mimic the essential design until the full project, the downtown modifications, if it took place, would could be accommodated.
I knew you would figure something out. I was saying that, you got to be careful.
Yeah. Won't you have some idea from the?
No, I lost.
I mean, you put like engineer, you guys will have some idea before we make a final decision or give direction. You'll have some idea of like what the general consensus is. So you'll know whether you need to.
Correct.
We don't have any cards?
No.
I move approval.
Second. Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Cullerton. Roll call vote. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Item 6D. Consider authorizing the town manager to execute a professional services agreement with Butte County Public Health. And again, Mark.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Crowder. This project, or this effort before you tonight is relating to our Ponderosa Elementary Safe Routes to School project, which was awarded through the Active Transportation Program back in 2016, when we first learned that the project was being awarded. This include, this is in relation to the project that's under construction physically right now on Pence Road in front of what is to be Paradise Ridge Elementary School here in next week, I believe. So with this specific project and ones like it before, it's included a non-infrastructure component. And non-infrastructure is essentially another way of saying education campaign or some sort of supplemental effort to evaluate effectiveness of the project and encourage more use of active transportation. So with that, we put out an RFP and received two responses, one from Mark Thomas and the second from Butte County Public Health to provide an active transportation program or educational services at the school site. We worked with the Paradise Unified School District, understanding that what a lot of this equates to is time. And we know time is super valuable in the classroom and, or outside of the classroom even getting access on, during recess, doing a bike rodeo, distributing education campaign materials and the like. So we asked Paradise Unified to support us and be on the committee and select a consultant between Mark Thomas and Butte County Public Health. And the committee unanimously recommended Butte County Public Health. With that, they are proposing to provide a robust delivery of services that includes coordination with Paradise Police Department. In past programs, we've had some enforcement hours dedicated to in front of the schools that were affected by the project and paying for the community service officers to support a bike rodeo and have that kind of community presence at certain events. Butte County Public Health is partnering with Chico Velo, a bicycle advocacy group, developing a Safe Routes to School Coalition with parents, teachers, students, public health, doing pre-surveys, doing post-surveys to say how effective was the project and prepare, prepare an overall report. So all of this is funded through the grant that we have received. And we have $101,000 that aside through the grant. And it's 88% funded by the Active Transportation Program. As mentioned in the staff report, the town and Butte County Public Health were in ongoing negotiations on scope and a work plan and cost. And so we've landed at $85,000 for their efforts to conduct this work over the next year and a half, concurrent to when construction starts this fall or when school starts this fall as construction is ongoing. And then really a larger effort once construction is complete, probably coinciding with May is Bike Month and, and the annual effort for getting all, all users on, on their bikes and active transportation. So with that, staff is recommending award of the contract to Butte County Public Health in the amount of $85,000, 88% funded through the grant. And the local match is already budgeted in the town's capital improvement program through the Transit Local Transportation Fund.
When will the construction be done?
Great question. So unlike other projects I've seen in the past, what has happened on Pence Road is that they've split the work to get the work in front of the, in front of the school done first. And that's a great partnership. And the school districts in, in coordination, communication on that. We are having significant issues.
PG&E.
With PG&E and undergrounding of the trench and utilities. What has essentially happened, and, you know, very direct and transparent conversation is, is in project development processes, we come up with a lot of, and put a lot of resources and effort into utility coordination and resolving conflicts. And actually, anytime we say we want to put a sidewalk here and PG&E has facilities that's in conflict, it's on them as the franchisee to relocate those facilities at their cost. We did that. It was all done. And then the fire. So the project was delayed totally. And then it comes to the joint trench. And so what we found is essentially there's a curtain of this like, no, no storm drain, you know, storm drain conflicts on the entire southern half of the job. We're working with PG&E. We have a plan to resolve them. It's going to take longer. I hope we don't need a winter suspension on the project, but we could based on those facts. That's a long way of saying.
Not in front of the school.
No, not in front of the school.
From the school down to Billy.
From, yes, from the southern boundary of the school down to Billy. It's going to take longer.
That's going to be a mess.
Mess is subjective, but it's, it's, it's going to get completed. And it's going to, it's going to be a great project. And it's really serving as a potential template and a model for the community of auxiliary evacuation lanes, widen center two-way left turn lane in front of the school. And so we're really excited about it. This item before you is completely complimentary and just going to be a great fit for the school and creating that community spirit and partnership. But the facts are, in addition to materials issues, we are experiencing.
So the reason I'm asking is education is going through this as well as once it's completed.
Correct. So opportunities.
You're a positive man.
Initially, initially, we thought that, oh my gosh, we're not going to be able to do any pre-construction data collection or efforts. We're going to just do everything when it's finished. This has opened up an opportunity for us to get in the school before construction's finished, do some programs, really do the full service effort that we were kind of planning on before the fire.
Okay.
And with the support of the school district and Butte County Public Health, it's just Paradise Police, Public Works, a great opportunity for partnership and a successful project. So we're excited.
No cards?
Second.
Thank you.
Not that I'm in a hurry or anything.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Jones. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Item 6E. Consider approving a master hearing office services in the attached format and authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement. Be presented by Scott Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good evening, Council. This, this is a proposal to award contracts for administrative hearing officers. As was discussed in the item previously, we, the town needs administrative hearing officers to conduct some of this code enforcement. We had discussed previously there were six, you know, items that were going forward. One actually went forward. The other five self-abated. They, I wanted to get that information to you in the proper form, and I wasn't able to get it before. But anyway, this, these hearing officers, we are going to need a substantial amount of them. With, with what we anticipate coming down the pipeline, if we don't get compliance with a lot of these, and it's in various areas, RVs with the tree abatement, with weed abatement, and there's other, you know, other code issues that where individuals may receive citations, they have an opportunity, a legal opportunity to appeal if they file a written appeal within 10 days. It would then go before a hearing officer. So this is a contract that, that I, I say the cost is flexible. The hourly rate is set. But if we get no appeals, we don't use them. And I would love to tell you, I'd cross my fingers that we never use them. We're going to use them. We currently received RFPs from four, four, I'll call them legal entities. One is an individual, three are law firms. The one individual actually works for a public agency and received authorization from their public, from their, to the attorney's office to, to do this. I'll use the term on the side. The other three, I'm, I'm familiar with two of the three. Jones and Mayor has at least five hearing officers in their wheelhouse they can utilize. Silver and Wright has at least two. I believe they have three, but I know of two. So the one I don't know is Armento and Heinz. There, there are a couple that they mentioned in their, in their proposal, but they did propose specifically one individual. But this will give a stable of, of hearing officers to the town so that if we have appeals, we can utilize these individuals. These individuals act in a neutral capacity. They don't represent the town, but we are responsible for paying their fees. Ultimately, if successful, we would get their fees back as part of a lien on whatever property is, that we're awarded. So there is a cost recovery mechanism anticipated with some of this. The staff recommends that you consider awarding this contract to these individuals. Now, we, we do anticipate, I've spoken with some other groups, other law firms, who have mentioned that they would like to respond. Have not yet responded. We welcome, you know, more to, to propose if they'd like to propose. And so you may see this again if we get another batch of individuals that respond. We'll bring it back for, to add more administrative. For the stable of, of. For the stable of officers. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but, and by the way, one of the things in this agreement, there is a, in the, in the scope of services, we are requiring a quick turnaround on, on their hearing officer decisions. We're requesting them within, within five days. We're setting a deadline of 14 days. So we'll have them within two weeks. We're requesting them within five, but we'll get them for certainly-
That is normal reasonable?
Yes.
So do they come here for the hearing, or is it Zoom, or how does that work?
Well, we are not offering to pay travel expenses. If they would like to be here, that's great, they're gonna come here on their own dime. Otherwise, they are welcome to appear by Zoom.
Another in.
Yeah, it's the city of Hayward, I think. It's a Bay Area city, and, and they've got a stable of, oh, probably, oh, I looked it up, there were, I think, 12 or 13 in-house city attorneys. This is one individual who does this on a regular basis, but would like to make some money on the side doing it.
Well, I understand you're doing all these so that, you know, you don't have one person looks like they're in your pocket and-
That's correct.
That makes sense. Why would you add more? I mean, this seems like you got plenty here, why would you continue adding more?
The reason why is because, to make a long story short, you don't care who it is, you just want to have, you just want to get the job done. If you have 100 cases have to come up, and you only have seven or eight hearing officers, you're gonna be significantly delayed on all of them. There's no risk in adding more because you simply won't use them if you don't need them.
Well, as a layman, though, I would, I would be concerned about consistency and judgment.
Yeah.
One person say, I went in there, my dog bit somebody, the other person goes in there, his dog bit somebody, he got killed, the other one, they let him go.
Yeah. So the state bar has actually come out with, with rules, and there was a court here, the court ruling, oh, they'll quote me on this, but it was about seven to 10 years ago, that there was a, there was a city that utilized one firm, and they had only individuals within, individuals within that firm, several of them, but only that firm. And the court held that that was a, you know, that there was a financial incentive for them to rule in the city's favor. And so the court ruled, the broader the better. They didn't put a number on it, and so, so we sort of thought, okay, let's, let's expand this as much as we can. You currently have, again with this, with this group, you've got four entities, so to speak, I know one's an individual, but you've got, you've got four places to go. The more you utilize one of them, the more you're susceptible to a charge of bias on behalf of the, of the ruling bar.
And that makes sense, but how do you get some consistency in how they handle the case?
You know, surprisingly, they're pretty consistent. This, this really, here's, here's what it is. We will provide them with, and this is part of our argument, we will provide them with the status of the law. Here's what the law is, here's the code, here's the evidence of violation. There's not much more than that.
Okay.
These are the notices we gave.
You're not concerned about it?
I'm really not. I have not, the, the number of times I have disagreed with an admin, with an administrative hearing officer, I can count on less than my whole hand.
Well, that's good. You just gotta remember Paradise is a small fishbowl, and everybody knows everybody else's business. If they don't, just go to Ace Hardware, you'll figure it out, and you'll find them, and talk about it. So that's my concern. So if you're, if you're not concerned about it, then I'm, I'm in with it.
And let me tell you, if you do get, if you do get a rogue one, there is, there is the ability to remove them as well. So, yeah, so I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned.
Okay.
So this deal is, we have a group of people, and we, the contractor, the agreement is, here's, here's the hourly rate, no matter which person we pick or who's-
All of them are the-
Four of them or whatever, and are all the other three firms, are they, any of them local, or are they all far away?
None are local. Jones and Mayer is located in Citrus Heights, near Roseville. You've got, the other firm was-
So we're not paying travel, so the thing is, if they wanted to be here, that would just be on them?
Yes.
And, and so if they didn't want to be here, because it's an expense to them, right, and we're not gonna pay for it, then Zoom or whatever is, is, that's okay for a person, you know what?
It is totally, totally acceptable, it's, it's, there's no requirement that you can't do it, you know, other than in person?
And we would provide, person would come here?
Yes. Well, the person at that point would have an option. They could come here if they want, they could also do it by Zoom from where-
From their home.
From their home or business, but yeah.
Because it's not like a court, like, we're there, you're representing us, just a hearing officer saying, here's the facts.
That's correct.
So, do we have any cards, Tina? Greg made me ask.
We have no cards on this one. Thank you for asking.
So I, I do have a word. I do sort of share Greg's concern too with consistency, especially if they're coming from different areas, so, but your experience has been that they, that hasn't been-
It has, my experience is that it has not. That isn't to say that you can't get a rogue one here and there. But, but the beautiful part about it is, let's assume you have, you have a violation, someone who's violating, you give them citations, we have the evidence. If we get an adverse ruling, you simply begin the citation process over again. You've only lost a couple of weeks, right? Give them another citation, they appeal it. By definition, I would not use the same hearing officer for the same individual because of the rotation. You, you simply shouldn't. And just like if the, if the town was successful, and someone else got a subsequent citation, they appealed it, I wouldn't use the same individual, I would use someone else, just to keep it neutral. There is, I don't want to give away too many, too much inside baseball, but there is attorneys, it's funny, because when I went to law school, you know, before, plagiarism was absolutely, you know, not okay, you don't ever do that, and then in law school, they tell you, look, embrace, embrace it when you're drafting laws, embrace it when you're writing opinions, because if that opinion has been upheld by a judge somewhere, then, then it's valid, and all you have to do is just adjust the facts. Many of these, many of these administrative hearing officers, they have these several opinions in their pocket that they utilize, one for an approval, one for a denial, and, and all they do is they just adjust portions of it. And I'm not trying to diminish anybody, you know, but these are, these are not-
Price oughta go down.
I move approval.
I second. Rose gets it.
Rose got it.
Oh, you guys do want to go there?
Motion by Boland, seconded by Tryon, roll call vote, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
That was important.
Okay. 7A. Council initiated-
No, 6F.
Sorry. 6F. After discussing regarding the new town seal-
How could you miss that?
I know. I got Woody sitting here, so I don't know. Consider waiving the first reading of the town ordinance. Colette.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you, please don't rob me of my last item before my leave, I appreciate that. So tonight, we are asking you to consider approving ordinance number-
610.
610, amending the municipal code section 1.12 relating to this description of the town seal. As you know, the town seal is identified within the municipal code with a picture and a written description of the seal. So as, based on the decision at your last meeting to update the seal design, we have to take the legal process to update the municipal code, and this is that action. So this is required by the introduction of an ordinance, there will be a follow-up at next month's meeting, and then it would go into effect 30 days after that period. I did want to mention, I know there were some questions regarding, you know, the difference between a seal and a logo, and how that works with branding and marketing, and I think that's a really great question. A lot of cities have different, different city seals and logos, and some use one and the same. We have always used the same, we have used our seal as our logo and for our branding. Our branding also has been varied, it has not always stuck just to the seal. As you know, our letterhead looks different from the seal, we actually have two letterheads that we utilize, so this is an effort to kind of put everything under one brand. And it is our belief that having a seal, having this new seal design will function as our logo. We also can utilize all of the artwork within this seal to take out for any kind of branding, to take out for creating new letterhead, business cards, email signatures, PowerPoint presentations, all of that. So that can all be pulled out of this, this one image, it's almost like the seed of our, of our branding, that we can then use for logos and all of the branding that we do. And so I hope that kind of answers that and how that works. We just don't feel we need two separate images that, you know, can be competing and possibly confusing. So that's really what this item is, is the legal procedure to update the ordinance, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do have a question. I'm looking at this seal on the wall. Would we be replacing this with something similar from this image?
So that specific item there?
Yes.
Yes, I, I would like to. I think that it's a very nice look to have something there, and I think it would be very nice to have something in place with the new, with the new seal. And that could be something out of wood, it could be something out of metal, it's something we could discuss further, but yes, I, I think that would be a wonderful idea.
Is that in the $10,000 you got budgeted for this?
That would be part of the $10,000 budget for implementation, yes.
What are we gonna do with the other Make It Paradise, the other logos that we're out there using? Are they gonna go away, get replaced with this?
That is a great question, actually, so-
No, don't tell them that.
So the Make It Paradise brand, though, that is something that initially was, was come up with to be for recovery and rebuilding, right? So we really wanted to direct people to that website, to that brand after the fire. Now, it's really, we really want to bring that all back in, under the Town of Paradise umbrella, and really, from the beginning, the idea was to use that Make It Paradise brand and evolve from a recovery and rebuilding brand to an economic development brand. And so this would be the time to do that and utilize that. You'll see in a lot of cities, they have kind of their, their city brand, and then they'll have an economic development arm that really reaches out directly to businesses and is more for recruitment and that type of branding. And so that's what we see Make It Paradise evolving into.
Using the little house logo?
No, no, it will look different. It will-
So you keep the name, but just, this will be our, this will be our badge?
Yes, this will be, and there will be an alternative look to Make It Paradise that will be different from this, but will take cues from this marketing.
What, okay, I get that part. So when you make the new things for the vehicles? Please make them big in proportion to the vehicle. Butte County took their new deal, and it's a little tiny deal on there, you know what I mean? I mean, we need to make them-
Yes, it's, it's very important-
Not like we're getting older or anything, we can't-
No, it is that.
Yeah, okay.
It is very important that they're readable, and I think one of the strengths of this design is it's simple, and so it can be, you know, readable even at a smaller level, but I agree, it should be at an appropriate size for the vehicle that it's on.
Put in braille.
Can I go back to this?
Correct.
Yes. I think there's a lot of sentimentality and attachment to this, so I, I don't want it to get lost, and we might think about what we're gonna do with it, maybe the museum would be a good place for it, but I just want to make sure it doesn't, no, we're gonna get a new one in here.
No, I understand, I don't mean leave it in this room, but we used to have, we used to have some stuff, you know, from-
Well, you can think about it, I just don't, we're not just gonna take it off the wall and throw it away.
It's not going in the garbage.
No, absolutely not.
But don't give it to the museum.
I'm sure we'll find it-
Do we have cards, Tina?
No cards on this one.
Okay, I'll move approval.
Second.
You guys are in a rush.
Motion by Jones, seconded by Tryon. This is to consider waiving the first reading of town ordinance number 610 and reading by title only, and introduce town ordinance number 610 and ordinance of the town council of the Town of Paradise, amending Paradise Municipal Code section 1.12 relating to the description of the town's seal. Roll call vote, Councilmember Boland.
First off, Colette, thank you, good job, and prayers with you, baby. Yes, aye, or whatever.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye. So the item John's been patiently waiting for. Item 7A, council-initiated item 7A1, consider discussion and direction to staff regarding dead or dying trees that are still standing on private property. Jody.
So I asked that we put this on the agenda, actually, because of some remarks that Mr. Romalia made at the last meeting about our ordinance not being sufficient to require homeowners to take down hazardous trees that might be threatening their neighbors if they didn't qualify for the government program. And so I was hoping that staff would be able to tell us, does the ordinance do that or not? Are there things that we should be adding to our ordinance so that we have tools in our toolbox to take care of what trees are left that may be hazardous to other people?
And I, I can speak to that, and I'll also ask our town attorney to weigh in as well, but currently, the current ordinance that talks about tree removal does not apply to trees that are not eligible for the state or private hazard tree removal programs. So when we talk about the trees that are on private property, that if they were to fall, would fall on a living area or a business, or just are a fire hazard, so maybe they wouldn't fall on anything but do present a fire hazard, those are not in that ordinance and to be required to be removed. Now beyond that, there is a question whether that would fall under a public nuisance, and whether, and, you know, how that would be handled. And so I would ask our town attorney to weigh in on that item, and whether it would fall under that. And then after that, I'll talk a little bit about the category four tree removal program.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll bottom line it quickly for you, just given the time. The short answer is, the answer is yes. If, if there is a tree that is dead or diseased, or, or in imminent danger of falling and causing some hazard to either individuals or property that is not, not the owner, then yes, that would fall under a general, a general, you know, public hazard, public nuisance. So we can utilize some other, there are other codes we can use to order the removal of those trees.
So in your opinion, we do not need to have a new ordinance that covers this?
I do not believe you need a new ordinance to cover this at the moment. And the reason why I say at the moment is because if, if we were to go to court and have some judge say, well, I disagree that this tree is, you know, is significantly, you know, doesn't cause significant harm or danger, then you may want to look at lowering the standard. But if we have an arborist who says that tree is in danger of falling, and it can cause substantial damage, that's enough. Under the current ordinances that we've got, that's enough.
So a homeowner who's living in a new home, and there's property next to them that's vacant, but there's a tree that's hanging over their house, they could have an arborist come look at it, bring that to the town, and say, please do code enforcement on this person? How would it work? How would they get justice?
Let me, let me take the question exactly as you asked it. If that tree is hanging over their house, if it's on their property, they can, they can literally take the property line, go up into the air, and, and cut that tree right at their property line. So if it's one that is in danger of falling on, it's not on their property now, but it's in danger of falling on their property and hitting their house, which is different than, I think, you exactly asked it, but-
But that's-
If that's the question-
The second one is really the question.
Then, then they need to just take pictures of that, bring it to the town, and we can begin enforcement.
Okay.
And, and now, we will have to have an arborist look at it, confirm that the tree is, whether it's, and, and some people won't cooperate, so, so we will either have to get as close to the tree as we can from a public space, or the neighbor will have to allow us to go on their property to get as close to the tree as we can to see that it is dangerous. An arborist has to look at it to determine, is it alive, dead, is it in danger of falling or not?
You know, the problem, the only problem I see with this is, most arborists right now are absolutely perplexed as to what's happening up here. are absolutely perplexed as to what's happening up here. Trees are coming down and falling that they, they're healthy trees, but it's because they're taking on more wind than they ever took on before because there's nothing protecting them. And so they're, they're gonna give an opinion, and, and there's gonna be, my concern is there's gonna be a real battle. And I don't, I'm not saying that we, we have to still do what we gotta do to help people, and, and I agree, there's gotta be some, some relief that people have that they can come to the town, but this is gonna be a tough one for what we're going through right now.
You know, I, I will say this. There is the ability for individuals to bring that case themselves. It is expensive. It's expensive for, for the town as well. It's expensive for everybody. But, but if, if someone has a, you know, if they're living in a situation where there is a tree that is endangering their living space, they have the ability, they don't need to wait for the town to do anything. They can go, they can take that action right now, go file it in court, get an arborist to, to certify, they can file it as a private nuisance. That's available.
As a civil suit.
As a civil suit, and they can get a remedy for that.
Most people don't, can't afford that.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm saying it so that anybody who's listening...
There's other remedies.
Who may have the option to do that, they can go do that now. They don't have to wait for the town. But for those that need to, they, they can refer to the town.
So I have a question. So somebody has a tree, take Councilman Jones's scenario, and it's gonna fall on their house. Is it up to them to get the arborist, and they have to pay for the arborist? Or how is that, like, where is the cost of this assigned to? Town pay for it, do they pay for it?
So if they take the action themselves, they pay for it themselves. If they refer it to the town and the town takes action, then, then the town would be responsible for paying for it if the town takes action. And, and the, and again, looking at the town here, the town is able to levy properties for the code enforcement. It's an open question whether or not someone would get those fees back if they took it up. I'm not saying they would, I'm not saying they wouldn't, I'm saying it's an open question.
But for peace of mind, it might be worth the money, so...
Yes. The other, the other thing is, I will, I will, they may get mad at me for saying this, you know, the, the county court system has a legal aid society that you can go there, and there are volunteer attorneys who will help you, you can make an appointment, they will help you draft these documents, individuals, they'll help them draft these documents. The city of Orrville, right next to City Hall, is the County Public Law Library. There are individuals in there who will help people draft these documents to file with the court. So there is, there is a way to mitigate a lot of those expenses. I'm not saying all of them, but many of them.
That'd be good information to get to our code enforcement people as an option.
Colette, can you tell us about category four? Cause I think that might provide some money for some people, too.
Yes, the perfect lead-in to the category four program. So as I think most of you are aware, the category four tree removal programs, so category four are, again, trees that are on private property that if they were to fall, could fall into a living area or a business, or just are on a private property and present a fire hazard, right? So we often refer to them as back forty trees. So we know those trees were not eligible for the state or private hazard programs because these are trees that would not fall into a public or private roadway or public property. So in that vein, we did apply to FEMA for a hazard mitigation grant back in February of 2020 for funding to basically have a cost share program to help residents remove those trees on their property. So we just, last week, were notified that we were approved for phase one of that program, which is wonderful news. We're very excited to hear that. Phase one is the first part of this program, which really encapsulates setting up the program, getting arborists on board, designing the program, getting people signed up, public outreach, and then phase two is felling of the trees. So while we would have loved to see it all in one approval, this is how we are, we are moving forward. So we're very excited about this.
So when you started your little talk there, you said they have to have, have to be able to fall on a house or a business? They're not just, and that wouldn't be the back forty trees, then?
It is all of those. So it is falling into a living area, a commercial area, or back forty trees.
Cause I'm, I'm understanding this is we need to get all dead trees out of Paradise.
Yes, this is the remainder of...
And this would do that.
So to identify, to define tier four is, tier four is anything that is not tier three, tier one, or tier two. I don't think I screwed that up, but I don't know what tier... It's not one, two, or three, it's tier four.
How many months did it take us to get approval of phase one?
Well, we applied in February of 2020, so...
Over a year and a half?
Yes.
So we're gonna design this program, we're gonna do public outreach, we're gonna get people all excited, and we can't apply for phase two until we finish all of that?
So we have already applied, so it will just be awaiting the approval for that section. So really, we're, we're designing now and understanding what exactly FEMA wants to in order to approve phase two. We are hoping we can streamline that process and get them everything they need as quickly as possible so we can move into that phase very, very quickly.
And I'll give you an explanation of why phase two is not funded. It's because under the FEMA criteria, you have to identify the tree and all the environmental portion of it before they give you the construction. So every tree is a construction project, so you have to identify every parcel, the environmental, the hazard, and then, once you have that identified, then that goes to FEMA for approval through that step, then you get the construction funds.
It's gonna be two more years before any of these trees come down, and they'll probably all fall before then.
And we wonder why people hate government.
Yeah, we, we don't feel it'll be that long. We have 11 months to get phase one complete, which means identifying every parcel, every tree, and then we feel like once those are identified, the phase two funds will just follow right behind.
I hope you're right, because we're at the three, coming up on the three-year mark, and that's when the roots are gone. We're really racing against the clock. So tell us how you envision this program working for the residents?
Yes, so this would be a cost share program. So the way it is set up right now, and we are still working on the details of this with Cal OES and FEMA, I'd hope to have some more information for you today, but unfortunately, we had to reschedule our kickoff meeting to be yesterday. So we're gonna be having that very soon, and I'll have more information for you. But in very general terms, it would be a 75% cost share. So this would be basically a grant to pay for 75% of the tree removal required on the property, with 25% back to the property owner responsible for that portion. Now, we understand that there are properties that have so many trees that even 25% of the cost share will be unaffordable for them. So we are very actively pursuing grant opportunities that would take care of that 25%, so that even maybe in income-eligible cases, that there would be a grant to be able to take care of the entire cost. But that's generally how that program would work.
And it's gonna work the same as the other tree program in that when they drop the tree, they have to, they have to remove that tree and dispose of it.
Yes, yeah.
Can't stay there.
Are we gonna hire the tree fellers, or are the homeowners?
So we would hire, we will have contractors, and that's part of phase one, is procuring those contractors, getting them all set up and ready to go. The idea being that everything, like Manager said, is done upfront, and as soon as that phase two is awarded, immediately felling trees and removing.
That include the stumps?
Oh.
It'll, it'll be very similar.
Same as, same as the old...
Thank you, Colette.
It's about removing the hazard.
Yeah.
So it sounds to me like we have a mechanism already, we don't need to do anything tonight. We have the grants coming, and there's really nothing to do right now.
Our portion is, is moving forward. If there's other individuals out there that have grants, we support that to get other homeowners eligible for funding to get these trees removed. Fire Safety Council, I know, has some projects moving forward. I think Rotary has given some funds for a tree removal. We support every project moving forward. This one is kind of in our bailiwick, and we're definitely gonna move it as quickly as possible.
Okay, thanks.
The one thing is, like, our prior town ordinance were pretty much about saving trees, not allowing people to cut down their trees. So we're sure that we're gonna be able to get rid of... Not quite.
Dina, card.
I have one card from John.
I guess.
Tony Lindsey.
John remembered.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody, for putting this on the agenda. A little bit of background for Mr. Huber. I had, in 2015, I sent a certified letter to my neighbor about some trees that were hollowed out that was, it was actually heart rot, and also some of the other. Needless to say, I paid for an arborist, he's went out and made a report. There's 10 trees over 100 foot tall that are shedding bark. They are coming back. There's two other oaks that were severely damaged in the, in the fire. Probably about a month ago, I was pulling in with my new Jeep, and I had a tree fall, catch the bumper and the fender of it. Lucky, lucky somebody didn't get killed. I contacted the person, and the first thing I do is get a phone call from an attorney by the name of Carl Levin. This guy says, "Well, it turned into your insurance company, we aren't gonna do anything," which I did. And now I'm being told that even though it was an act of God or whatever, that I'm gonna see an increase of $35 a month unless the money is recovered. I called the insurance commissioner's office, and they said, "Once your con, once your current period expires," basically the insurance company could do what they want with their prices. And so we're being impaired by it. There's no doubt these trees are a problem. I had all things trees, their arborist, out and looked at it, and he agreed with it. Tony's been given a copy of it. I've also, we're in the business of vegetation management. I've had seven jobs in town that I've turned down because trees on adjoining parcels, it wasn't safe to send workers in. We just saw, last week, we saw firefighters, situational awareness, they're constantly looking around. Had a tree that had been dead for approximately three years, top break out of it. Not high winds at the time, it just, it happens. We need to do something, and I, I thank you for your opinion on that, and I don't think that this tier four tree program is gonna be anywhere close, because you're gonna have to do a reassessment, just like they did for the prior program. They're gonna have to have the biologist, the archaeologist, all of them come back in again, because it's federal money, and we're looking at years, we aren't looking at months. And I just thank the council and thank the town attorney for looking into this, and hopefully the staff will move forward with some of these severe instances.
Any cards?
So, 7B. Council reports on committee representation.
I'm good.
Me, too.
My lips don't work anymore.
I did attend a few things. Very quickly, the Paradise High School groundbreaking, which was very cool. Glad to see that project moving forward. Got a tour of the new gym and the new softball field. It's fabulous. I'm excited that we're gonna have new school facilities for our children. Also went to B.CAG, went to the Design Standard Workshop, and the Sewer Advisory Committee yesterday. That committee is the mayor and I, and Chico's mayor and vice mayor, and we're negotiating principles of agreement on the sewer project that would connect to Chico's sewer system. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the Chico council members who are on the committee and how cooperative they've been, and we're making really good progress. I'm very encouraged.
Can I just say that Paradise football starts 27th this month?
No.
Friday nights, we're back.
You still on the chain game?
Absolutely.
Right on, man.
Best seat in town.
And I'm gonna duplicate about half of what Jody said, so in, in interest of time, I'm, I'm done, so what do you?
Yeah, I think I'm only on the consortium of care thing, and that is a massive committee, and I read their emails, but they're all over.
Interest of time, I just went to my usual meetings and worked with Kevin on a resident
So, town manager report.
Oh, you forgot future agenda items.
Oh, sorry, future agenda items, anybody? Town manager report.
Yeah, I think you've heard most of what, what's been going on through this last couple months tonight, so I'm just gonna keep it brief. And that we're, we're continuing to move forward with our grant applications, hazard mitigation, funding, and also to make sure that the funding is being reimbursed, that needs to be reimbursed through the FEMA projects.
Okay, so with that, we'll adjourn this meeting and go to closed session.
Are you staying here or going to your office?
Going to my office.
Hey, Colette. Colette.
It's, you don't need to be, if you'd like to be, you can. It's about confidentiality.
Yeah. Are we doing? Are we having?
Yeah, we are.
The closed session for the...
See? We're having that.
Okay, fair.
Just...
Okay.
But Jeff won't be on.
Yeah, okay.
But I just... Yeah.
All right.
Come on back. I was told that that's where... That's why I came to my office. Kevin? Yeah, yeah, okay, that'll be great.
We're leaving you out here.
So I'll put in this...
But I gave you the invitation for the...
Yeah, you're good.
Bye, Colette.
Yes. Come on, tell us something, shoot from here.